And I am calling to order this meeting of the Planning Board for July 16, 2020. May we have a roll call for attendance, please?
Click.
Chairman LaRue?
Yes.
Uh, Vice Chairman and Pemba is not here, I believe.
Correct.
Member Clerk Raymond. Member Cavino?
Here.
Member Gaffney?
Yeah.
Member? Um, uh, uh, Member Spel, sorry.
Here.
Member Rappaport. Did I miss someone?
Um, I don't, did we hear from Raymond and Member Rappaport? Yes?
I can see Member Rappaport.
Okay, alright, so we'll move on. Um, this is LaRue once again. The Town of Burlington will be holding the July 16th, 2020, virtual 11:00 meeting for the current state of emergency due to the COVID-19 virus. As such, the Governor issued an executive order on March 12, 2020, authorizing vote meetings under General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20.
So this meeting will be held via Cisco Webex and it's accessible if, um, with a Webex link if you go to the Town of Burlington Planning Department page as well as on our agenda. The password is 2020. It can also be accessed via telephone by dialing 617-315-0704 with access code 1292755163. The meeting is also being broadcast on BCAT Government Channel 90, Comcast 99, RCN 15, Verizon 41, and streamed on Facebook Live via BCAT Facebook page. Um, public input will be able, the public will be able to make comments during the hearing, during the time for public comment, um, when the Chairman announces time for public comment. Questions can be asked via Webex phone, Facebook Live, Webex chat, and email at Burlington, planning@berlington.org during the meeting. All persons wishing to ask a question must make a comment, um, or ask a question or make a comment must identify themselves. If you have questions regarding participation during the meeting, call Planning Staff at 712701645. Um, I also, I know we have a lot of people on for a lot of different topics, um, and in order for us to try to streamline, um, and understand who's on for what topic, if you are on Webex, and it's possible, um, there is a function, um, in the section that has the person with three lines in, um, and that says chat. Um, the one thing, if you are able, um, if you can identify what project that you are on here for, um, that would help us at least try to figure out, um, who's, how many people are on for what particular project. Um, during public comment, we will also certainly ask anyone on the phone if they're interested in making comments on any of those projects as well. Um, we're just trying to figure out a way to easily, um, manage the, the number of people that are on this meeting. Uh, we also ask that if you do use the chat function, um, that we are using it for questions, um, and not to actually chat amongst yourselves during the chat functions. We have Brady Caldwell in our office as well as Jen, um, Jelena watching all the chat functions to make sure we get all the questions during, within all those formats. Um, all the, uh, all votes will be taken by a roll call vote. And that, I think that's it. And Brady or Jen, did you have any other, um, thoughts about, um, how you wanted to make sure you were getting all the, um, participants' questions?
I do not. Um, it seems that using the chat function is working well for the time being. I think that's, that's the carry on.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, um, thank you. We'll try to manage as we can. I would also, um, ask you if you're not speaking to mute your line. And I'm obviously unmute when you do want to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin, Brady, and Jen. This is Barbara again. Um, as Kristin said, we have a very full agenda and a lot of people on the line, so we'll try to be efficient and please bear with us and, um, we ask for your patience. We will get to all of the items on the agenda and everyone will have a chance to speak who needs to do so. Um, so the first thing on our agenda is distance time, and anyone wishing to ask a question or make a comment on an item that is not on our agenda, please identify yourself now. And I'm going to give Brady and Jen a couple of minutes to see if anyone raises their hand. Anything?
I'm not seeing anyone, Barbara.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not seeing anyone either, thank you.
Thank you both. Okay, so we're going to move on to announcements. Kristin?
So, yep, announcements. Um, I don't know a lot, actually, but, um, just as a reminder, um, federal census is still ongoing. Um, if you haven't filled it out, it's always helpful. Um, also, August 12th is the last day to register to vote in the state primary election by 8 o'clock. So, um, that's it unless anyone else has any other announcements.
Thank you, Kristin. This is Barbara once again. We do not have any legal notices or not suitable today. So we're going to move on to Item 6, Administrator Matters, and we're, um, actually, are we? We're going to take, actually, I mean, I'm, we're going to take one item out of order here, um, because we do believe there are a number of people here to discuss Item 7A. So I'm looking for a motion to take 7A out of order, please, for discussion purposes.
So may Bill here.
Chairman LaRue? Member Clerk Raymond? Member Cavino?
Aye.
Member Gaffney?
Aye.
Member Spel?
Yes.
Member Rappaport?
Okay, this is Barbara again. Item 7A is a continued public hearing petition to amend the zoning bylaw Article 2 definitions and Article 4 use regulations to address and define uses pertaining to short-term rentals submitted by the Planning Board. So this is an item that we know there are a number of people here that want to discuss. So we're going to, um, I'm going to ask Kristin to just quickly review what we have in front of us because we are already contemplating a bylaw change that we hope will address the concerns that people have. I want to let, um, everyone listening and participating know that what the Planning Board does and our, our role in this process is to hold the public meeting and make a recommendation to town meeting. Town meeting will have the final vote on this bylaw change and that will happen in September. So, uh, Kristin, if you want to give us a quick summary, that would be great.
Sure. Um, this was a bylaw change that was, I think we started talking about this six or eight months ago. As we were seeing an uptick, um, in Airbnb and short-term rentals, um, the first type of issues, I mean, actually, from a department level, I think we've been talking about this for two or three years. We first started seeing issues with people renting rooms in their house in areas that were not able, that were not supposed to be used for bedrooms, you know, basement rooms, other things, that didn't have the proper building requirements as well as access. Um, and that's, that's where it began. It moved into, um, just as we were seeing more and more rental, short-term rental. Um, I think everyone has seen, heard, or seen, or read, um, some of the issues that happened over the weekend, which, um, also falls into some of the issues that we've been seeing with short-term rentals. Um, we submitted this to the further of the May town meeting. We had continued it based on, um, just some, uh, some questions that we still had, um, the council had brought up with the general bylaw, but, uh, we've worked with zoning bylaw review on this article. And what we have introduced is a definition for short-term rental, which is the use of a residential unit for residential occupancy by a person or persons for a period of fewer than 28 consecutive calendar days for a fee. A short-term rental may or may not be facilitated through a booking agent. A short-term rental is an occupied property that is not a hotel, motel, lodging house, or bed and breakfast establishment where at least one room or unit is rented out by an operator through the use of advanced reservations. A short-term rental includes an apartment, house, cottage, or condominium. And what this also is in the use table across the board under principal use as well as accessory use, not allowing for, um, the use or rental of anything less than 28 days across the board in Burlington. And we have submitted it, re-submitted it again for September, um, and it is here to discuss among the Planning Board.
Thank you, Kristin. Um, I, I do believe there are members from zoning bylaw review here. I don't know if any of them have anything they want to just quickly add to Kristin's summary, or if that, if they're satisfied and don't have anything to add, you don't have to. Alright, I don't hear anybody, so we're going to move on. Uh, let's start with Member Raymond. Would you like to make any comments or ask any questions regarding this item?
Uh, no, I don't. I think we've gone over this, uh, pretty thoroughly. And wasn't it Bill and Michael that got it started? And, uh, no, I'm, I'm, I'm satisfied with we, with what we have before us in that.
Okay, thank you. Member Cavino?
Yep, sorry. Uh, just a, a quick, uh, this is going to be under the zoning bylaw and not the general bylaw, is that correct, Kristin?
The proposal, well, the proposal in front of us right now is the zoning bylaw. Um, and for what is, it goes in front of the Planning Board. Uh, the general bylaw had a few hiccups that we're still working out with council, which is one of the reasons it was postponed for May. I don't have an update as to the general bylaw at this time, but the zoning bylaw can move forward with, with or without the general bylaw.
Okay, the, the reason I was questioning that was because if it's in the general bylaw, then it's enforced by the Police Department and the Building Inspector doesn't necessarily have to, uh, go to court, get involved, whatever. So I'd strongly urge us to, even if we defy, put a definition in the zoning bylaw, that we somehow or another see if the selectmen are willing to see it into the general bylaw. That's really all I have to say right now. Thanks.
Thank you, Member Cavino. Member Gaffney? Bill, would you like to weigh in?
I think that's me. Member Gaffney here. I just have a question, um, maybe just for the folks that are new and for the residents that. So, yeah, we, uh, initially brought this about with some concerns. Yeah, sorry, I was on double mute there. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Double muted me. Based on what we saw i- in the news and how Burlington, uh, was being impacted by that, uh, some of the things that we thought about with regard to short-term rentals is that for a short-term rental in Burlington, you know, what's, what's the intent of that and what do we currently have? And we had a lot of hotels, um, in town for short-term rentals. So we're kind of looking at the benefit of the town, uh, versus, uh, what else was out there and seemed to be covered there with just the many hotel rooms that we had. And then we looked and benchmarked other towns around to see what they did and, and I would say the great majority of towns, if not all, uh, do prohibit that. So it was inconsistent, uh, with the area as well. Uh, the only questions I have on this, the table, so this is this two, uh, two items here where it is allowed with the two yeses. That's in the Water Resource Overlay District and what's the, with the A District?
The A District is the aquifer and those are overlay districts that are, that are specifically related to things that affect the water, water, water quality aquifer. If it's a no in the underlying, it's, it's a no in the aquifer water resource. So there's really not a reason to say no twice. The, that is, yeah, anyway, so that's the, the reason. It's not allowed in aquifer water resource, it's just not something in the overlay for those, it would, would have been a sensitive issue. As I've said to zoning bylaw review, if you wanted to say no on those two as well, we can do that. It's, it doesn't change the effectiveness of it, um, if it made people more comfortable that it's something for the Board to discuss.
Okay. And just my only thought is, does it make it easier for the Attorney General to approve that if the yeses?
Um.
System with the table?
Potentially. I mean, they don't like to see no's across the fully prohibited, um, but it, it, I don't, I wouldn't say it's a huge issue either way.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's good.
Thank you, Bill. Um, Member Spel?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to try and keep it brief, um, because I know we have a lot of people that want to talk about it. But I'd like to express my frustration with the whole process here. I think as far as I'm concerned, the Planning Board has done its due diligence here with short-term rentals. We've had our, um, our subcommittee, which consisted of myself, Member Gaffney, Sherry Ellis from ZBRCE, and Selectman Miranda, and we went through some extensive, um, studies looking at the issue as Member Gaffney mentioned. And this, our particular Planning Board has voted 7-0 to move forward in prohibiting, um, short-term rentals here in town. So I hope that we can get this wrapped up in September. I think the onset of COVID really slowed the process down and that's not anyone's fault. And it's also exacerbated the problem because of some of the issues we've had recently in town that we're all pretty much heard of. Um, I've gotten a call at like 1:00 AM from one of the butters and have called the police myself on a party here in town. And it's just very frustrating that this has gone on for so long and I'd really like to wrap it up. It's ruining the sanity of our neighborhoods. It's, she, it's not really what we want here in Burlington as we found and discussed. And I hope that we can really move it along quickly and I hope that all the residents will speak up with all of their concerns, big or small. So the more, uh, input we have on this, the more we have to go to town meeting and say that we really have to make a change here and have, give some stern footing and direction as to, uh, getting rid of this problem in town. I know Building has been working exceptionally hard on trying to, um, the one particular neighborhood, the Windmere neighborhood, um, observe the neighborhood. I know John has been over there a lot, Andy has done a ton, and with their limited resources, I'm amazed at the amount of stuff they've done. So a lot of people have been putting a lot of work into this and it's my hope that we can at least move forward in September. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member Spel. Member Rappaport?
I don't have anything additional to add. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, so this is Barbara LaRue again, and, um, in just a moment, I'm going to open this up to the listening audience and take comments and questions from, um, residents and whoever else may be listening. As, as, um, Mike alluded, we have heard that there have been a lot of problems, some very bad problems this past weekend, and I understand that a lot of people want to share what's happened in their neighborhoods and, um, we're, we're open to hearing that, but what I'd really like people to focus on when they're speaking is to focus on this bylaw that we read to you and that you've had a chance to read hopefully on our website because we want to find out if, if the residents that have these concerns believe that this bylaw change will address their concerns. So while I understand that people are upset and they want to tell us what happened, that's fine, but let's also try to drill down to the specific amendment and make sure that what we're composing is going to fix the problem because that's, um, as I'm going to quote, uh, Paul Raymond, um, who in the past very widely stated that, um, yes, we know we have a problem and the soonest that we can fix it is now. So we're trying to fix this as quickly as we can. Let's make sure that what we have in front of us is going to address the problems that you all have. So, um, Brady and Jen, I'm going to ask you to sort of control who's speaking when. I'm going to mute myself so that I don't speak over anyone.
So I see in the comments in the chat in the Webex, um, Jean Lanting. I apologize if I mispronounce her name. Um, if you would like to go ahead and comment first. You may have to unmute yourself.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep. Perfect. So I am one of the, um, residents that, um, called the police in regards to Friday's activity. You know, it's very mixed, mixed living in this family-oriented neighborhood, very unhealthy. You know, children don't want to go to sleep in their own rooms. I am paying an astronomical amount of money to have my house cleaned due to the marijuana smell that is now lingering in multiple rooms in my house. Um, you know, I picked up trash on Saturday. Um, the owners of the rental unit apologized, but I think they apologized more because I mentioned I was going to file a complaint. Um, you know, because it's rented right now. I, I understand most people here know what happened. I voiced it and I didn't hide what happened. It was also on the police log. Some people don't know the extent of Friday night's, um, activity. Um, it, it's irrelevant, but my biggest concern is I bought a home in Burlington. I'm from Winchester. I bought a home in Burlington with the, um, understanding that it was a safe town, the kind of town you want to raise your family in and your children are going to attend great schools. And up until the last couple of years, Burlington still checked off all those things. You know, I can't send my, my, my kids out into the neighborhood now because I don't know who's out there, right? There are so many faces that are coming and going and strange activity. I don't feel safe sleeping in my bedroom. That's, these are not things that residents of Burlington should feel, and it could happen to anyone in town. A house goes up for sale, it could happen right next door to someone else who's on this meeting, and what are we going to do? I also kind of feel that 28 days may not be enough. I, it might prevent a lot of this, um, short-term rental and what the intent of some of these folks are doing such as having parties, um, doing, you know, what, doing, you know, uncomfortable business. It would be great if it somehow could be even 60 days. Who's to say that someone's not going to, you know, they're not setting up camp in Burlington to, um, do unlawful business? Um, so I would feel comfortable if there was some verbiage saying that maybe it's six months. Six months is still considered short-term. In addition to that, I know I did the bylaw and I wonder if there's any kind of gray area when you're saying, um, a bed and breakfast? Can someone buy a home in this neighborhood and then turn it into a legal bed and breakfast in a residential neighborhood that is not zoned for business? And all of these, you know, one, um, if someone owns a home and they're renting out the bedroom to help pay their mortgage for a night or two, you know, per month or per week, that's still a. You know, and it's, this is a, again, most of Burlington is a family-oriented community. And I am so, I will say for everyone who's reached out to me, thank you. Thank you for making me feel safe and wanted in this community. And it makes me want to stay instead of putting my house up for sale and moving to a, a town like Linfield who has put into place this bylaw, but they put it into place when it was too late after a group of young adults held a part, rented a home, held a party, and a fight escalated and a young gentleman was shot to death. That could have been Friday evening 10 feet from my bedroom. That is unacceptable. And I, I know no one in this meeting is responsible for that, but as a community, we need to come together and make sure every single resident is safe, including our police force who showed up and had to deal with 200 young adults who had been drinking and doing drugs. The police force, in my opinion, was also put at risk for family-oriented men who had to, you know, move this party along. So that's what I have to say. Um, you know, I, I really hope that maybe we could change a few, some of the verbiage, extend the, um, 28 days to even 60 to kind of look at that verbiage of a bed and breakfast. Is there any shit, gray area? You know, and again, keep Burlington, um, as a family-oriented community. We're doing a great job. Everyone who lives here, you know, the, the next generation, they buy homes here. We want to stay. We can't push out these amazing families. We just can't. We're doing a great job. Everyone who lives here, you know.
Sorry, is that a different person speaking?
Yes. We can't push out these amazing families. Community, we're doing that. I don't know, it's like repeating itself.
I think that's someone watching on TV who's listening.
Alright, that's probably what it is. Thank you, Jean. This is Barbara.
I appreciate your help. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jean. Um, this is Barbara again, and so two issues that you brought up, I'd like to ask, um, our, our staff to weigh in on. First, the issue of 28 days, that is something that we talked about as well. Should it be longer than 28 days? And I, I think there might have been some legal concerns. Am I correct, Kristin?
You're muted, Kristin.
Eight days gets to, um, month-to-month leasing and month, um, leasing of apartments, renting. That's a whole nother area of law that, um, we would need to, um, get into that council has, anyway, that it's very difficult to limit month-to-month rental. But to the bed and breakfast question, um, bed and breakfast are only allowed in the Town Center Overlay District. So a huge area of Burlington is not, uh, well, does not have an issue of a potential bed and breakfast, um, going next to their house. It also would need to be, um, approved by special permit by the Planning Board, uh, if in the Town Center Overlay one was proposed. Um, but the month-to-month rentals, we can try to get a more thorough answer from council, but I know as, um, the first blush, um, going more than 30 days. And we actually started with 30 and it was advised that we go to 28 because February is a 28-day month. Um, and that would then go be in conflict with that, again, other section of general laws of month-to-month leasing. So, um, I can try to get a more, um, formal answer by the next meeting, but, um, overall, I know the, it is difficult for us to limit month-to-month leasing or renting.
Thank you, Kristin. This is Barbara again. So for everyone listening, I should have mentioned at the beginning of this that we are not going to be voting on this item tonight. We will also have another meeting in August where this is discussed. So, um, that will give us an opportunity to check with town council and get back to you about this question as well as give people who were not able to attend tonight an opportunity to weigh in. So, thank you, Jean. And who's next?
Uh, Crystal Turnquest.
Hi, Crystal.
No, I, I didn't want to comment. I'm just here to show support that I think they belong in my neighborhood. Sorry.
Thank you, Crystal. Don't apologize. Thank you.
Jessica M.
So same thing, I'm just here to show support for the neighborhood, um, and it's just to support Jean.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Chris?
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Hi, Chris.
Hi, just because I'm jumping in at the last minute. So once this, if this zoning bylaw does pass, does that give any relief to the residents or do we still need the general bylaw?
If the zoning bylaw passes, it's, uh, it will be prohibited to rent anything less than 28 days.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear. So even without the general bylaw, this still gives some to neighbors to call and get some relief?
Oh, absolutely. It's just the, uh, the zoning bylaw is enforced through the Building Department. The general bylaw is enforced, um, more broadly, and that was the reason that we were looking to be in the general as well as zoning. So there would be, um, just additional enforcement, um, for, for violations of this, uh, of this type of use. So, and that's not, again, as Member Cavino mentioned, it's not to say we're still not investigating that, but it's, once this, um, if this is successful at town meeting, it is prohibited and illegal and, um, through the Building Department. The Police Department can certainly still go in and then enforce any disturbance, um, but it would be through the Building Department.
And what would the, the Builder Department would, you know, levy a fine or, or?
Well, they, it would be a bunch of different things. A cease and desist, it would be, I mean, they, they have a lot of avenues to, to go after of prohibited use.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure it's going to have some teeth. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Chris. This is Barbara again. Just one quick question. Kristin, my correct understanding of the general bylaw will be put forward by the Board of Selectmen, so anyone who is listening that wanted to weigh in with that could also weigh in with the Board of Selectmen. Am I correct?
Um, I'm not sure if it's got, if it has gone that far. I know through zoning bylaw review, it was brought up, there was some concerns that council had brought up prior to May town meeting. Um, but I think one of the decisions we've certainly made is that regardless of those issues, we want to move forward with the zoning piece at this time.
Oh, I, I, I understand that, and I just wanted sort of, I just wanted everyone to understand that this is our piece and the general bylaw will happen separately, and when that goes forward, it will be moving forward with the Board of Selectmen, not with the Planning Board.
Right. Correct.
Alright, who's next?
Uh, Darlene Collins.
Hi, Darlene.
Can you hear me?
Yep. Yep.
Yes, again.
I just trying to, I'm using um, my um, son-in-law's computer. Um, I just wanted to just weigh in, of course, give Jean's support too. I feel you, Jean. Uh, because 17 Glen Ave, um, it, it's been ridiculous. There was a ma, I'll just say madam for the less, at least sake of any other word. Uh, prostitute at 17 Glen Ave for at least two weeks. And we saw several Johns go by, uh, come in, come out, and, you know, it's ridiculous. Um, and then the parties, and I know other people can chime in too, so. Um, that's all I wanted to say. It, it's been very uneasy. Um, and same, same Jean, I have trouble sleeping at night, people coming up on my deck. Um, my dog, thank God, I have a dog. Um, I do have security and all of that, but my dog alerted us, uh, 11:30 at night that, you know, obviously, and it was a weird bark. I've never heard um, of these people coming up on my deck. So, I, I just want to say, you know, you know, we got to get this passed. Um, the only other question I have is, um, I know it's short-term rental, but is there also something in there that says owner occupied or not, not owner occupied? Thanks.
Hello, hello. I'm an owner of 17 Glen Avenue.
Hi, please go ahead.
I just want to clarify the situation about the two weeks of prostitutes. We were closed for, in 2019 and 2020 until June, and sorry, until May. In May, we rented for one month for Harvard prof, uh, professors, a couple of Harvard professors. So it's definitely not a, uh, a couple who brought the prostitutes. And, and before we booked, yes, we do Airbnb, but we are very careful with the, with the tenants, uh, in order to get rented in our house, we are getting three five-star reviews and have to get recommendation from other hosts and government ID. So, and the, we check, I, I live nearby, like next door, and I'm walking five, five times, like even more than five. I'm all the time walking dogs around the house and checking them. If I see a car which I not recognize, I always ask them. So, from May until, from May, when we opened in May, until June for a month, I did not see anything going on there. On June 27th, it was party. I know that. It was my mistake. It was a very big mistake. I apologize. It was a guy without reviews asked me. He said they're working late and we did not have any rentals for two weeks after this couple left. And this is why we agreed to accept it. It was a big mistake. And they, they check in at 8:00 PM, they check out at 8:00 in the morning. I did not know anything. I know neighbors, they all know me. So I would prefer anybody give me a call, so I already provided my phone number to everybody. We are not doing currently, we, we already advertised it for long term because it's also a big problem for us, this Airbnb. So, but is about this specific party, it was a party. But according to police report, when they arrived on complaint about noise, they did not see anything abnormal. And it was finished, it, the party started at 12 and finished at 1:30. I agree, it was not right, but it definitely not two weeks of prostitutes going on.
Okay, thank you.
I cannot show 100%. So probably it was different address.
Thank you. Um, this is Barbara again. Thank you for weighing in. Um, I just want to make sure you understand what it is we're discussing regarding this particular bylaw. And if this passes town meeting in September, then you would not be able to rent your property for less than 28 days at a time. Um, we're going to.
Have any problems with it? I'm totally supporting this. It's even better for us because this Airbnb, it's also a big problem.
Great, thank you very much. Um, I did want to get back to the caller. Um, had a question, the caller before you had a question regarding owner occupied. Kristen, can you address that, whether or not it makes a difference if the home is owner occupied? I don't think it does, but I just wanted you to address that question because we didn't get to it.
Um, so short-term rentals, we covered both, um, we had this conversation about if it's just renting a room in your house or renting the whole house um, early on with this. Um, but what this, this covers everything, whether you're in the house and renting a room or you're renting your whole house. You can't do anything less than 28 days.
Thank you. I just, I, I, I did understand that, but I wanted to make sure everybody who was listening, who weren't, they were not party to that conversation earlier. I wanted to make sure everyone knew that. Thank you. Brady, do we have anyone else?
Uh, Donna Ricker, would you like to comment?
Um, yes, I would. I also live on Glen Ave in between both of these homes. And um, I just want to say that um, I don't feel safe sending my children out, my grandchildren out. I can't send them four doors down because you never know who is in any of these homes. I'm happy that you do in the 28 days. My question is, um, in the event, in, in the 28 days doesn't seem to be affecting, um, will the town revisit it?
Thank you, Donna. This is Barbara again. Um, I think we're actually going to look at the, the number of days between now and August. So it's, it's, it's possible that we would be able to extend that beyond 28 days. Um, I can't say that for sure right now, but I think the answer to your question is if we do go forward with 28 days and we find that that is not effective and we're still having problems, of course, we would revisit it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Kelly Fallon, would you like to comment? Um, Barbara, I'm not hearing Kelly, so we'll move on to Jay Burke.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
I live in the same community. I'm, I'm on Overlook. Um, wasn't really aware of, of how many problems that we had or how many Airbnbs we actually have hosted in our neighborhood. So just here to show support, and I, I share all the same concerns that others have voiced already.
Thank you.
Uh, Tony Salamon.
Thank you. I do apologize for the background noise from a, a very windy Simons Park right now. Some of my concerns have been addressed, um, any loopholes that may be there with a bed and breakfast. But thank you for explaining that piece, uh, that piece, Kristen. Um, and again, here for general support from someone who has grown up in Burlington, specifically uh, this neighborhood. It has changed a lot over the years, a lot for the better. Um, you know, but recently, you know, very, um, very scared just to send my children to the bus stop, when we used to send kids to bus stops. Um, but looking forward to, um, the, the 28 days, I think is reasonable for that bylaw. Um, I understand it would be a lot of trouble to, to go any further. I think that's a great start. But I think most of my questions have been answered to this point. I'm just here to support the neighborhood as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Julie Cullen, would you like to speak? I'm not hearing from Julie. Bridgette, um, had asked to speak briefly in the chat. Bridgette, could you also identify your last name, please?
Uh, sure. Can you hear me?
Yep, yes.
Great. Uh, my last name is Jay and I live on Windmere Ave. Uh, my brother-in-law lives next door and my mother-in-law lives there as well. And I just wanted to, you know, support the neighborhood. I don't have anything additional to say. Um, I think everyone gets the idea of what's been going on. I just wanted to reiterate that it's, it's concerning because I have children as well. My mother-in-law is 84 years old and there's a lot of times that my kids are home by themselves at night and that my mother-in-law is home by herself and there's been strange people walking around the neighborhood. And it's just added a whole other level of concern, you know, aside from even just the parties, just the random people coming and going. It is concerning.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Barbara, Julie Cullen couldn't unmute, so she would like to speak now.
Sure. I apologize. I was coming in from the car and there was some chaos. But um, I want to, so I want to just thank you all for taking up this issue. A lot of my questions have been answered as well. I am happy to start with the 28 days. I, I appreciate that. It will be reviewed and if it's not working, you know, we can kind of go from there. But I think it's a great start. I live directly, I live in 18 Glen. Um, I, I just want to make sure that regardless of what's here now, that we can kind of put something in place to make sure that this doesn't become the norm in our neighborhoods. Um, so thank you for taking this up. Thank you for putting this forward. And I really hope that this goes through as a great place to start.
Okay, thank you, Julie. Um, this is Barbara again. Um, I have no idea, Brady and Jen, how many people we have still in the queue that want to speak. But I'm going to just ask everybody, if you could, try to um, forward either new questions, new ideas, or if someone wants to offer a differing opinion. Um, but if we're here to support and, and agree with what's already been said, we can take your names down and we can add you to the list of people that want this to go through. Um, just because we have a, a very packed agenda tonight. So is there anyone else who would like to ask a, a different question or bring a different concern?
I have a, a different question. My name is Cheryl Farnar. I represent one of the homeowners. Is it possible to have something that was a little more tailored to address the concerns of all the, the residents? Because all the concerns are definitely very valid. But if someone, for instance, wanted to rent to a family member or a college student or someone that maybe not be as unsavory, is there a way to draft this in a way that obviously everyone who owns a home has the constitutional right to profit and make money from their home? Especially if they, maybe some people can't remain in the, you know, remain at their home or something of that nature. And I'm going to guess that's also why you can't prevent month-to-month, because if I buy a house in Bel Airica and I can't, you know, Burlington, my apologies, and then I can't sell, then I'm stuck with a home I can't rent. Is there a way to be, I guess, more creative um, within that 28-day restrictions? Like if there is a college student or if there's someone that kind of look at what are all the concerns? And what is the best way to make sure that who the persons are? Because even if, for instance, you go to a 28-days, like someone mentioned, it might not address all the concerns. Like you still, like someone could just rent to someone for three months that is unsavory, right? So if it maybe was a little more tailored to address, you know, the, the type of persons that are being rented to, what's the screening process or what is that open door? Perhaps everyone's issues can be addressed without circumventing people's rights to make profit from their home if they need to, to pay the mortgage, especially with the current economic circumstances. Is there a way or is there an opportunity to sit down and have a more creative conversation?
Um, okay, thanks. Thanks for the question. Um, what, the concern that I would have with trying to allow for rentals less than 28 days and putting other restrictions in in terms of who you're renting to is that it would probably be impossible to enforce. Um, and for most, for the most part, if people are allowing family members to rent their homes, I, I think probably, you know, rentals by month-to-month at the very least would be fine, not for a, a time period less than that. Um, I'm not sure what other methods you had in mind, but my concern with that would be enforcement. Um, and I'm, I'm very willing to, to hear if there's someone, if, if, if our staff can weigh in on that, if, if they want to disagree with me or if any other members of Planning Board have some ideas about that, I'm very willing to listen.
Yeah, so the basic question, uh, the basic answer in zoning, you can't discriminate um, through zoning, you can't discriminate who. Um, who's the renter, who's the restaurant operator, who's the whatever? Um, and we get at that issue, um, you know, quite a bit in the 90s. We got it with a lot with the big box stores, like I want this store that's owned by mom and pop, but not Home Depot, you know, so. But in the same thing here, that in zoning, it's very difficult to say, you know, a sweet little college student can rent, but you know, unsavory, well, what's the difference between a college student and unsavory character in zoning? So, um, I, I think we all understand, we all understand where you're getting. Um, it, it's just through the mechanism that we can control and what we're looking at here. Um, it's very difficult to, to get at that nuance. Um, you know, you might be able to do a little bit more in the general bylaw as that discussion progresses. But um, in zoning, it's hard to, to get at some of that, those issues.
And there's, there's no current zoning, um, right now, there's no current zoning rules against short-term rentals. This was just a new proposed amendment, correct?
This is a new per amendment. We do have something that's been on the books for a million years. Um, that is a kind of a, a boarding house, that you can rent a room in your house by special permit by the Planning Board. Um, so to, to, for those that are renting rooms in their house, they're technically not allowed right now unless um, they have a special permit by the Planning Board. And as I mentioned, we were seeing issues with building code and other things and, and obviously not having special permits with the Planning Board. So this would clarify and define um, that the, what the use is and that it's prohibited across the board. So it makes it much easier to enforce by the Building Department.
I understand. So if I rented my entire house, that wouldn't put into the boarding room issue. So that's why there's still a concern versus like, it's clear when it's room to room. Would that be correct?
Room to room, it's, it's clear, it's a clear violation now without a special permit with the Planning Board. But you kind of get into property rights and other areas of law that if you, if you don't allow someone to rent month-to-month.
Perfect, okay. That makes sense. That, that's all. So I, I think it's more about whether or not there's a way to be less restrictive in the, in the termination of what goes on and, and things of that nature. Um, but thank you for taking my question.
Well, and just to, to the whole group, because this comes up a lot, um, you're never allowed to be a nuisance. You're never allowed to do criminal activity. You're never allowed to do, so as to what happened on Glen Ave.
Because an owner can have a bad, a big, an owner can have a party and, and do some crazy things in their own house and.
Right, right. And there, it's all, you know, enforceable through other mechanisms of law. So, you know, by allowing this or not allowing it, you know, some of that activity that I, I think we all agree is, is very problem. It creates a lot of problems, is not allowed anywhere now. So, yeah, just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so if there's anyone else that has a new question or concern they want to bring up, please um, let Brady or Jen know. Otherwise, we are probably going to continue this to our August meeting. We'll have some more information um, to present then based on the questions that we've had tonight.
Barbara, I just have Jean would like to make, uh, ask one more quick question.
Hi, my question is, if it were to pass for the 28 days, how do you ensure? Or what would happen if um, someone failed to adhere to that, right? Um, chances are maybe someone would say, oh, it's my cousin's brother just staying with me, you know? But of course, neighbors would at this point have um, a place to turn to. Is there like something written saying, you know, if you are caught, I don't know, some verbiage, and this is the repercussion?
What are the consequences? That's what you're saying. And, and I think the consequences for um, violating the zoning bylaw may be different from the consequences for violating, violating the general bylaw, which is why we want both.
Yes.
Can you bring, can you just quickly?
So if you are, if you have a use that's not allowed, um, the Building Department can issue a cease and desist and you have to stop immediately that use. Um, so, for instance, so last Saturday, there was, or Friday, whatever day it was, um, there was a party and there was, and someone, they found out that it was a less than a month lease. Then the owner would get some sort of correspondence from the Building Department to, you know, stop that activity because it's out of compliance with zoning.
And that's all that would happen? Just a letter?
No, no, no. They'd have to cease, that, that owner would not be able to rent until they remedied the situation. So no, not just a piece of paper, they would, the activity would need to end.
Yeah. And would that person, if they failed to adhere to that bylaw more than three times, then what, right? Because we have some people who just don't follow the law. Let's be realistic. Like then is there, like, will there be like levels of repercussion?
Um, I can get more of an answer um, as, as well as some of these other questions about 28 days for the next meeting um, from the Building Department. And I'll just be more prepared to answer the different levels of enforcement that they have to offer.
Thank you so much.
This is Barbara. Is, do you know what the enforcement or what the remedy is if it's a general bylaw?
Not clear, not clearly enough to speak, speak.
No, okay. All right, thank you. Thanks, Jean. So we'll have to get back to you on that. Thank you.
This is Paul. Barbara, you ready for motion?
I am, unless there's someone else. Do you see anyone else, Brady and Jen?
I'm sorry, I'm seeing one person on Facebook, Mike Sescovich. He says, we agree with Jean's proposal of 60 days over 28 days. My wife and I just moved to the Windmere neighborhood and agree with Jean's concerns given our experience last weekend.
Okay, thank you Jen.
Thanks, Jen.
And for the WebEx chat, Barbara, we do not have any more people looking to ask questions, voicing support for this issue. We do have a number of call in users. I would just quickly check to make sure any of our call in users.
Is there anyone who's on the phone, not on WebEx, that has a new question or issue that they want to bring forward on this item? Speak now.
Hello?
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 Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Hi, I just wanted to, hi, my name is Karen. I live in the Windmere area and I would like to say that thank you to Jeanie Lantain for being an advocate for the neighborhood. I support this entire forum and I'd like to say that there was a lot of destruction that evening. Those individuals that rented that Airbnb, a lot of them were from a different neighborhood, not too far from Burlington. And I heard many of them saying, oh, we came here to party and to spread COVID. So I would just like to say that, you know, me and my husband bought this house in this neighborhood back in 2009 and we really enjoy Burlington, but here we are, you know, fast forward years later, we have three different Airbnbs in the neighborhood near our house and it's causing a lot of carnage.
We're afraid because of one violation. One violation is one too many. So I forbid something happens with just one violation. That's what I'm concerned about.
Exactly. So thank you for hearing us out and we support the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you for calling in. I actually, I want to thank everyone who has, who's called in and who's on the WebEx and participating via Facebook. Thank you very much for bringing your concerns to us. And please feel free to reach out to our planning board staff as well if you have any other questions after this meeting is over that you think of later. And again, we will be bringing, we will be discussing this issue again at our August meeting. Okay, I think I'm ready for a motion.
This is Paul. I make a motion to continue these matters to the planning board meeting of August 20, 2020.
Second.
Is our meeting on the 20th or the 13th?
20th.
Okay, I was about to check.
Really?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I'll trust Jen. Okay, that's just the third Thursday. Okay, sorry. Oh, yeah, the third obviously, because we're first and third. Okay, August 20th. Chairman LaRoe, long night. Vice Chairman Pemba is absent. Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Espia.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you, everyone. We appreciate your input. So now we are going back to item 6A on our agenda, which is a continued discussion, application for the minor engineering change, 3 and 4 Dartmouth Road, General Walker State subdivision, General Walker State's applicant. So I'm not sure who General Walker is here. If you could let us know who's present, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I can do that. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
This is Gareth Orsman. I am counsel for General Walker. Just brought me in the last few weeks to try to help get this to the finish line and go to the next phase.
And is there anyone else from General Walker here or are you handling the whole thing?
Uh, no, Ed Champy is, he has a conflict, so it's just me today.
Okay, and do we also have someone, is Taylor here? Who did the peer review? You know?
He is here, I see him.
I see Taylor, yes. He's just muted, Barbara.
Okay, great. All right. Could you just take a moment and just very quickly bring people up to date as to where we stand on this? I know we were hoping to get it resolved tonight.
Sure. So we, we actually had a decision drafted for you for June 6th, actually, I think. And we had talked then, Taylor gave us a law, a review of his.
Kristen, I think we lost you for a moment.
No, I got muted and unmuted for some reason. Anyway, so Taylor was at, I think, the June 6th or 17th, June 6th meeting, I think, to go over his findings in, for the drainage as well as some other aspects of the project. And I just wanted to go through, so you do have a draft decision. The board members have a draft decision. We did circulate, through our representative of the neighborhood, the draft decision. There's a couple, there were just a few things we wanted to work through a little bit. Their original draft decision that I had circulated back in June 6th, we had replicated a lot of the original conditions from the definitive subdivision and conversations with council. She just said, you know, it's already in there, the original decision is still, still valid. This is just the minor engineering change, which included some of the drainage and other aspects of the project as well as some grading at the cul-de-sac. I know one of the neighbors had questions about the telephone, a telephone pole being moved. The telephone pole needs to be moved pursuant to the original decision. So we didn't, we didn't replicate that here. We certainly could reference it if that was something, again, that was important. They also, just kind of procedurally, they've submitted an amendment to the subdivision to remove the original cul-de-sac that was proposed at 101 Francis Wyman Road, which was kind of a bump out from Francis Wyman Road. That is not on the agenda tonight. That'll be on your agenda in August. But in just in terms of the plan that will be modified and then endorsed will be a combined plan for this as well as is that project. A lot of the work that we've been discussing from the beginning in terms of cleaning out the system, installing silt sacks and erosion controls has been ongoing in terms of just making sure that the site is stable, stabilized, that no additional sediment are getting into the cul-de-sacs. I know Ed Champy walked the site with the Conservation Commission to take a look at the existing erosion controls and hay bales to make sure that they were improved. And with the approval of this minor engineering change, they can get going with the the improvements that will further enhance the area and remedy some of the identified issues that were on site. So our recommendation is to move forward with the minor engineering change so we can get moving with the improvements and hopefully at some point finish the subdivision and, you know, and any disturbances in the neighborhood.
Thank you, Kristen. This is Barbara. There were two items before I turned this over to the board that I wanted to just quickly bring up that we had discussed at our last meeting that I expected to see in this decision that I'm not seeing. So I wanted to ask about them. One is the addition of granite curbing along the driveway to direct the flow of water to where it's supposed to be going and also connecting the downspouts from the house into the drainage system. And those were things that we talked about at the last meeting that are not in this decision, but I, so I'd like to see them added as, as I understood that was the agreement.
So with those questions, I guess, I would recommend that if there's, that Taylor might want to weigh in on those questions.
Great, thank you.
I can absolutely weigh in. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I was having microphone issues earlier. Apologies.
Thank you, Taylor.
Of course. Yeah, the granite curb versus the Cape Cod berm, I think my opinion is that the granite curb is a better solution in terms of maintenance and in terms of how long it lasts. It's a vertical obstruction right there at the edge of the driveway. I would have no issues with a snowplow driving right up next to it. You know, you guys have seen granite all over town. I'm sure it lasts, it takes a beating and keeps going. You know, Cape Cod berm, if you scrape it with a snowplow the wrong way, it could definitely scrape off and it could peel up some of the driveway with it. If a plow were to be used on the driveway during winter conditions. As far as, as far as the downspouts, I think, I think I'm okay with them if they spill out onto grade, especially if you're going to be using a granite curb. Because if they spill out onto grade, number one, they're going to infiltrate right then and there within the landscaped area. And any water that's not infiltrated, it's going to travel over the driveway, hit the granite curb and be directed into the stormwater system anyway. So either way you look at it, it's either going to be infiltrated within the, infiltrated within the landscape area, or it's going to be infiltrated within the stormwater system because it's eventually going to travel along that driveway and granite curb into the stormwater system.
Okay, thank you, Taylor. I have a question. Is there a preference for having it infiltrate into the stormwater system or into the ground? Is one better than the other or are they the same?
From an engineering perspective, I think they're the same. Six of one, half of those in the other.
So one of them would have a different impact on surrounding properties?
No, they would not have an impact on surrounding properties because either way, it's going to be directed to the stormwater management system. Whether you direct connect or whether it travels to the granite curb via overland flow and then that curb directs the water into the stormwater system.
Okay. Is there a reason not to connect it directly? Is there any benefit to not connecting it directly since that's, see, that's what we had discussed. So I need to understand and I think the neighbors want to understand why that's changed in this decision.
Reason not to connect it directly.
Is there any detrimental effect if you connect them directly?
I mean, other than an excavation of an already occupied property, you know, that would be a detrimental effect. You know, there's not much.
So it's a short term?
That would be short term, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I understood that before we moved on. Thank you, Taylor.
No problem.
So I'm going to see if our other members would like to weigh in. Member Raymond.
Uh, no, I think we've tightened this down as much as we can almost, so I'm satisfied with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Cavino.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I was concerned about the downspouts also when the driveway had just a Cape Cod berm on it. Because if the berm got damaged, then if the downspouts flow into the driveway, they could, they could end up off the driver. But now that there's going to be granite curbing there, I think, I think it would be safe to allow the downspouts to flow onto the driveway and into the infiltration system. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Cavino. Member Gaffney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only thing, the only comment I have is I'm still reconciling the issue I have with everything's per what the state says and everything lines up as it's supposed to be. Mr. Miller still had water in his garage, which he never had before. So I look at either two things, either the calculation is wrong from a state standpoint or the engineering's calculation is wrong. So I still have to reconcile that because he was getting water. He never got that before. So that's, that's where, I'm still stuck on that, that we have to go beyond the state calculations or the math problem somewhere. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Bill. Member Espia.
Mike, you're on mute.
Actually, you know what? Sorry, Mike, are you there?
Yeah, I was on mute, sorry.
Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, I, real quick, I know Kristen mentioned the removal of that extra telephone pole was in the other decision and that's why it wasn't in this one, but I would like to see it added here just to make sure. And these guys have been through a lot and just to make the whole sure, along with running of the electric underground before Dartmouth, just to make sure everything's in there and everything's buttoned up, but everything else I think I'm okay with. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member Espia. Member Rappaport.
Mirroring what Mike just said again, I'd also like to see that removal of the pole in this document. Other than that, I have nothing else to add. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, this is Ernie. Could I ask Taylor to clarify something that Bill brought up? I, because I wasn't, could I just ask Taylor? Yeah, it's Taylor, is the system in place, complete in place now? Because Mr. Miller says he's still getting, he's getting water in his garage and I, you know, you shouldn't, that shouldn't be happening. So is the system working now or does it need the granite curbing in the the forbay and whatever at the end of the driveway to work? Please.
The system needs all the upgrades that I've, that I've called out in my peer review letter, which includes the curbing. Their engineer also added an additional underground infiltration system, supplementing the infiltration system that's already there. I think with the addition of all those items, it will have a truly functioning system that then made mass DEP regulations and the town of Burlington regulations.
Okay, thank you. I didn't want Mr. Miller to think we're disregarding his comments. I just wanted to make sure that I understood that the system wasn't complete. That's maybe why he's not getting water. Thank you. Oh, well, he is getting water, sorry.
Thank you, Member Cavino. This is Barbara once again. So I had the same question Ernie had. I'm glad to hear that the system is not complete and we would all hope that that would make a huge difference. My question for staff is, what happens if all of this work is done and Mr. Miller or other neighbors continue to have problems with water? What is the remedy?
Well, we have, during construction, we have a bunch of erosion controls and checks and maintenance through the course of construction. After construction, we have a requirement to clean the system for a period of four years and work with the homeowners association to make sure that they are funded to maintain the system and understand how to maintain the system to make sure that that's cleaned out. And I think for the oversight that we have, the, I guess, the, what we can put in, we have put in for the timelines to make sure that during the course of construction as well as years after the construction, the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, the maintenance of the system and everything else has a, a plan and will, a plan for maintenance to ensure its continued operation.
Oh, I understand that. That's, my question is more getting at what Bill was getting at, although we don't really know because the system's not complete. If the system is complete and it is maintained properly, but it still isn't working, then what happens? That's what I would want to know if I was living next door to the site. Is there, is there a way to revisit this at a certain point? If, if the system isn't working, that can we revisit it to put forward additional remedies to make sure that the neighbors are not impacted?
Yep, so we do have. Yep, so we do have a condition that actually was in Taylor's letter. So either between myself and Taylor that include after, hold on, let me just get to the condition. The video inspection, six months, six-month video inspection to ensure the system is functioning, making sure obviously that the town is notified so they can witness the inspections, remedy, and then the remedy of deficiencies discovered during the inspection. And the timeline for those remedies. And and the, you know, deficiency cannot be remedied, that they post a bond. So we have, we're kind of holding them to actually remedy any of those, any of those issues. And Taylor, I don't know if you want to speak a little bit more just about your comment in that letter and kind of just in general, how you would answer this question, you know, here and/or anywhere else that it was, it would be asked.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right. And item, on page four, item number four of my June 2 letter, I say, "If any concerns are uncovered at either TV inspection, the developer should consider any and all remedies up to and including replacement of the system if warranted." So that's the language I used in the letter. You know, maybe, maybe, maybe it would be appropriate to consider some other language in the decision to kind of back that up.
Thank you, Taylor. This is Barbara again. I would like to see some additional language. I think what I'm trying to get at is, I want to make sure that it is clear that even if the system is working correctly and it's being maintained correctly, if the neighbors are having negative impacts, in other words, the system maybe wasn't adequate, that we have a path for them. That that's what I'd like to see in here is there's some, to give some assurance to these neighbors who have frankly been through a lot. And I'm sure that it's hard for them to accept that this is going to work because they've not, they've seen so much go wrong all along. It's kind of difficult for them to have faith. So can we?
We, under our, under our authorities and what's in the decision, we have a number of checkpoints. Those checkpoints highlight areas for discussion and remedy. We have checkpoints after this. It's, I mean, for us, we make decisions based on the engineer and we have the peer review engineer. So it's, we have the information in front of us and it's hard to, and we've dealt with this before, but it gets, getting into the kind of what-if scenario after we have a decision. And I think we've put in place quite a bit of checkpoints. So if we do have any of those what-ifs during the timeframe during construction as well as up to four years after construction for maintenance, to get at those questions. But it's, it's hard, you know, to say, it's hard for me to say that, you know, anything that happens forever and how do we figure out if it's pointed back to the system? And I know that's not an easy answer. But we have to make a decision based on the engineering and peer review engineering that we have in front of us.
Right, but it does sound like with the four years, we would be able to take action if the system was not doing, was not, while it may be working correctly, if it's not doing what it was intended to do, then we could address that, correct?
Correct. I mean, we've had our peer review, Taylor, look at how it's supposed to work, how it's been designed, how it's been installed. And if it's not doing what it's supposed to be doing, you have to trace it back to some of those evaluations.
Thank you. One more thing that I wanted to bring up and then I want to give the neighbors a chance to weigh in. One of the things that concerns me is I know we have checkpoints along the way as this proceeds. The town, I assume the building department, perhaps the engineering department will be checking in and making sure that everything is being done properly. I have concerns about that because that hasn't happened up until now. Not to, not because the town was not doing its job, but because they were in certain circumstances, not informed before things happened and therefore could not view them as they were happening. So I think that it's going to be very, very important and I want to make sure that we have some verbiage in there that, to make sure that this developer understands that the onus is on them to inform the town at each stage and that they cannot proceed until the inspections have been done. I know that that's common knowledge and they should, we shouldn't have to say that in the document, but I think we need to in this case.
The applicant's required to notify the town prior to those investigations.
Okay, thank you. All right, I know that we have neighbors here that would like to weigh in. Brady and Jen, can you sort of control the flow as you did on the last item?
Absolutely. So on the WebEx chat, I do have Anthony Materazzo commented first. Mr. Materazzo would like to comment. The floor is yours.
I don't know if Mr. Materazzo was still there. He did say that he had a limited amount of time. Tony, are you there?
I do not see him under the participants list, Barbara, so.
I think, as I go, he said that he had a short period of time.
Okay.
He also had the issues about the telephone pole and the underground electric line. So I think we've addressed at least partially some of those questions.
And so in that case, Mr. Miller, David Miller commented. So if, Mr. Miller, you'd like to go ahead?
Yes, I would. I'm Dave Miller, Gloria Circle, Director Butter Tuts Project. First, I want to bring up, I'm kind of disappointed about the downspouts not being connected. And based on Gaffney's comments, to me, it's the scene that would be a more bulletproof solution. In particular, the downspout that's by the back deck on the side of five Dartmouth, it dumps right onto the driveway and not onto soil or ground or whatever you want to call it. And I know, yeah, the granite curb, assuming the granite curb gets put back in, that's better. But to me, direct connecting it seems like it, this would be a no-brainer to connect it in. And if it's just a short-term disruption, so I guess I'd just like to see if that can happen. Doesn't seem like a big deal to me and it seems like something because of the water problems we're having in our house here, that anything we can do that seems like a small amount of work that might have a bigger impact, why not do it? So anybody want to comment on that?
I would agree with you, Mr. Miller. I would like to hear from my other board members and see if there's anyone who would want to make an argument against what you're requesting. Anyone? Okay, so it seems that no board members have an argument against connecting the downspout. So let's put that in the decision.
Okay, thank you. Now I have a question. I don't know for the attorney, for General Walker State's, I don't know if he can answer it or he has to pass it along. But in one of the previous planning board meetings on this minor engineering change, Mr. Champy said that the Stack of family would no longer be associated with this project. And I just want to make sure, is that still true? Because as I said at a previous meeting, if they are, then we're sunk.
I have no idea. I have no idea. I don't know why that's a concern. I mean, I've heard some of the background here. When we get through the butter comments, I would like to respond to some of what I've heard from the board so you understand where we are on all this. You can make your decision as soon as possible. But one of the things I would like to ask is really that people should confine this to the minor engineering change and not all the history of the, you know, project here. Because that's not really before us.
Well, if that, if that particular family does a construction, the minor engineering work or any other work, we know what's going to happen. We've been living with this nightmare for three years. So I just like insurance that, and that was, Mr. Champy said that they had their own contractors and their own people who do the work. And I would much prefer that.
My, my understanding is that he has been using his own contractor and his own people and they have moved on. I cannot guarantee that and that's all I can tell you. But my standing from what Ed has said is they've moved on from that particular family.
Okay, well, I'd like, if you get back to me with a definite answer, it'd make me feel a little better. I think, I think it would make the neighbor, neighborhood, all the neighbors feel a little better too.
Mr. Wolfman, I understand you can't answer that question tonight, but if you could just check in with Mr. Champy about that and get back to our staff, it would just, you know, if the answer is yes, it'll, it'll put some people's minds at ease.
Sure, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you.
So as far as the conversations I've had, I know we did talk about that in the beginning, that nothing has changed since the comments that he did make. So, and it's not something that we could condition in the decision, but certainly we can work with Attorney Orsman and the applicant.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, did you have anything else you wanted to add? Sorry, Mr. Miller, we've lost your audio.
Okay. I think, I think it may have covered daydreaming or something with some of it. Sort of given the track record of this thing, how do we ensure going forward that we're not back here in two or three months because things weren't done right? I know you said something about, you know, they can't go on until inspections are done. How do we ensure that the town can keep a close eye on this to make sure things are done according to the way the plans are approved?
So as I mentioned, there's a lot of checkpoints during ongoing construction and a lot of requirements during ongoing constructions to check in as well as town departments reviewing. I think some of the issues that happened early on were the town departments weren't, the chairman mentioned that town departments weren't notified. There were subcontractors. And when Mr. Champy first came to the planning board, I think he, you know, we had really looked for him for guidance to kind of get the crew that was under him working, kind of making sure that everyone was reporting to the town and letting us know at those, those activities. So there, there's quite a bit of oversight written in here as well as the departments have taken care to make sure that they understand those contact people, that Ed is the contact person. And initially, that was a couple of different folks. And I think there was a lot of confusion in the beginning that is not happening right now. So I think through construction, we'll, we'll have a lot of opportunities for those continued discussions and checks.
Yeah, I guess, is there a way for, I don't know what person in what town department or whatever, but like I say, gee, we haven't heard anything in a couple of weeks. We, we need to go and see what's going on and make sure everything is hunky-dory. Opposed to sort of being a little more proactive than reactive. So, you know, so is there a way to make sure that the town says, gee, we haven't heard something and whatever the time period is, we need to, we should go check and make sure everything's okay?
Mr. Miller, this is Barbara, and I think that's a very reasonable request. We don't really have control over all the other departments that would actually be going out and doing the inspections. But I would certainly feel comfortable asking our staff to make it, to put a note on their calendar to check in, say, at least every other Friday so that they can check in and make sure that everything's moving on the way it's supposed to and that inspections are being done. And that way, we might be able to catch anything that gets overlooked a little earlier in the process. Kristin, would you feel comfortable with that? We could perhaps assign that duty to Brady.
Yeah, no, I definitely feel comfortable with it. And we do now, we used to have bi-weekly, now we have weekly department development coordination meetings. The one thing that COVID has actually done pretty well is forced a lot of us to talk a lot and a lot more often about ongoing construction. So we do have a hit list every single week, every Tuesday. This is one that we, there hasn't been a lot of construction, but the thing, when things are under construction, we make sure to hit every single week. So I would feel comfortable, we'll certainly put it, you know, at the top of our list for putting it on the radar. But communication is very good right now among departments to make sure that everybody's kind of talking with the people they need to and doing what they need to be doing. As well as, we don't all want to be out in the field. So trying to use each other's eyes to make sure that everything's happening the way they should, so.
Okay, then perhaps instead of trying to reinvent the wheel, if you have the departmental meeting every Tuesday, maybe we just ask that you keep that on the agenda for that meeting for the foreseeable future until the project is completed. So it is discussed and checked in on every week.
Yep, of course.
Okay, great. Does that help, Mr. Miller?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much. And I think I'm through. You won't have to hear my voice again tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Brady and Jennifer, is there anyone else that wants to speak on this matter?
I do not have anyone more, anyone else in the chat setting, so. Jen?
I'm going to check in.
I don't have anyone either. I don't have anyone either.
Okay, then I would like to check in with the applicant's counsel. You said that you would like to move on to some of the issues that were raised.
Yeah, I, you know, I have watched the videos on this. You know, I'm knowledgeable about subdivision law. I don't think it has quite the amount of discretion this board wants to exercise in it. And the board should vote when it's going to vote. But I just want to let you know, one of the reasons we did not go forward at the last hearing as we saw the draft decision, my client saw no reason to put in the granite curb. And as far as I'm concerned, the way the subdivision law works is if you propose something that complies with the board's rules and regulations, which the Cape Cod berm does, and Mr. Doughty gave the opinion that it does, then the board should approve that and not choose another remedy. So I cannot say that my client has signed off on the decision that seems to have been modified to date. We were fine with the draft decision that was presented to the board. So take that into consideration as you will and make your vote and we'll make our decision as to how to react.
Thank you. So am I correct in understanding that the only thing your client objects to is the granite curbing?
Correct. I, yeah, I mean, we were, we were, we had talked with Ms. Kastner. I talked with town council, Lisa Mead.
I just wanted to make sure there's nothing else. Okay, thank you. So I am looking for a motion and I'm looking for a motion that includes the granite curbing and also the moving of the telephone pole and the underground electric. I'd like to incorporate everything. So if someone could make that motion, I would appreciate it.
Madam Chair, there was also the question about connecting the downspouts.
Oh, yes, thank you. That would also be in, I think, since no one objected when we asked the question, I think that's going to be part of it as well. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, this is Ernie. I'd like to make a motion that we move this with the inclusion of the granite curbing in the downspout as proposed.
And also with the moving of the telephone pole and the underground electric.
Yes, obviously, that's in, yes, sure. I don't see a problem adding it in, but it's already there.
Second.
My second motion.
Okay, do we need to read it the way it is, Kristin?
I would, I would read the motion.
Yeah.
If someone can. It's on page five, top of page five.
As your clerk, if you wish, I'll read the motion.
Ah, cool.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Raymond.
Madam Chair, I make a motion for an engineering change application in accordance with section 7.2.1 of the Planning Board Subdivision Rules and Regulations to a previously approved definitive subdivision plan to allow for drainage slash utility modifications and additions, grading modifications, as well as reconfiguration of the driveways to each of the lots as shown on the plan entitled, quote, "General Walker State's Down Throw, Burlington, prepared by Dresser Williams &amp; Way, dated February 25, 2020. There are no changes to the layout of the subdivision lots frontage. Said engineering change decision is subject to the following revisions, terms, and conditions." is subject to the following revisions, terms and conditions as discussed. Should I put that in?
Yes, please.
Yep.
Okay. Anyone want a second?
This is Mike. I'll second.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Espia.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Zero, zero.
Terrific, thank you. Um, okay, so we're moving on to item seven B, an application for approval of a preliminary subdivision, two hundred to six hundred Summit Drive. Gutierrez Company is the applicant. Um, I'm not sure who is here from Gutierrez. If you can just identify themselves so we know who's here. And then Kristin, if you could give us a brief introduction, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Um, Madam, uh, can you hear me now?
Yep.
I'm Madam Chairman. For, for the record, Robert Buckley, Reimer and Barnes, both getting feedback. I don't know why.
We can hear you just fine, Bob.
Okay, but.
So we'll give you a second. We'll have Brady pull up the, the plan.
Yeah, I'm getting feedback on my end, but if it, if you're not getting it there, then I'll.
We're not, we don't hear it, so just.
Okay. Is this better? Can you hear me?
Oh, that's terrible.
It was better before.
Brady, do you have the highlighted plan that we highlighted today?
Kristin, I do not. Um, apparently, when I left the network with the laptop, uh, I can't open that drive.
Okay, so we'll work.
On the network from home.
Um, so let me give, I'll give you an overview and then I'll let uh Bob and Scott Weiss um talk through it. But um, what you're seeing is a preliminary subdivision application. Um, it's a preliminary subdivision because it's, you must, in a commercial subdivision, um, submit a preliminary first. We don't see a lot of preliminary subdivisions. What the preliminary subdivision application allows for is the planning board to make comments to the applicant prior to the filing of the definitive. So um, your action on a preliminary doesn't in fact allow for any changes to lot lines. It's really just a a way to, to comment um prior to the filing of the definitive. The definitive has been filed and will open. Somebody's getting a lot of feedback. Great. Um, the definitive has been filed. It will open at your next meeting as we don't open and close in one meeting. This will stay open until the next meeting close um at the next meeting, and then you will open the definitive application that actually does um facilitate a change to the lot line. Um, what you're seeing here, if you can see the plan that Brady has up, there is lot. Almost. So there's um six hundred, two hundred, four hundred, and three hundred. Lot two hundred and six hundred below are relatively unchanged. What this allows for is where you see the dotted line is frontage um for a lot three hundred. Which slightly modifies the cul-de-sac, actually enlarges the cul-de-sac. Right now, it's kind of at a weird angle, and this actually makes it for um a better cul-de-sac layout. Um, but also gives frontage to um a lot three hundred. And then from there, I will turn it over if the feedback issue is solved.
Any better?
Much better, I think. To Attorney Buckley.
Thank you. Uh, no construction is being proposed uh with respect to the layout or the subdivision in a way. This is a culmination, a culmination of the uh three years endeavor by the town of Burlington to entice and I'm going to take this speaker out of my ear so I can talk. So raise your hand if, if, if it gets a little uh crazy, but the intent here was to create a situation where we could move forward with the uh policy initiative, which was started by the planning board about three years ago to encourage um life science to come to Burlington. We went through the uh zoning changes. The most recent one uh was the last town meeting to correct the one lot that was left out. Now, the entirety has been rezoned to IH for the life science designation and use. In order to create a lot to go to market and to entice, uh, and, and surprisingly, or maybe not surprisingly, there's a lot of interest out there in the marketplace, but you have to be able to show that you're ready to go. Uh, we've come forward to create the new lot, uh, three hundred um, which requires us to make minor modifications in the layout of the roadway. Um, but we're not proposing any change or new construction. Any change or, or, or to site conditions or drainage, et cetera, would occur in connection with us coming forward with a site plan for the, the board's review. So that's basically it. It's, it's really a technical change. As Kristin indicated, we had to file a preliminary because it's a commercial subdivision. Um, and we will be coming forward with a definition, definitive, which is a, a copy of this, but it's, it's really a minor change to allow us to create the lot, to allow us to fulfill the, the initiative that the town started. Now I'll put the earpiece on.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, um, Kristin, you didn't have anything else you needed to add, right?
I don't have anything else. We don't have any issue with the, with the application.
All right, Member Raymond, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, no, uh, because this is, uh, you know, we're going to be looking at this over the next couple of meetings, I would think. So uh, no, I'm, I'm fine for this right now.
Okay, thank you. Member Covino.
Uh, no comments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Member Gaffney.
No comments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Chris Baio.
No comments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Member Rappaport.
Uh, no comments. Thank you.
Okay, I also have no questions. So um, we, can we vote on this tonight? Do we need to move it to August?
Um, and we haven't prepared the, the decision just because of the policy of.
Yes. Okay, so we're going to continue to, to August. I think, Bob, you can convey to Gutierrez that it's not a problem.
Yeah, I will gladly do so. Again, it's a preliminary subdivision. The definitive will be followed right away at the twentieth, uh, August twentieth meeting. But.
Okay, thank you.
Again, no constructions being proposed.
Okay, thank you. If my, if I may have a motion, please, to continue to the planning board meeting of August twenty, twenty twenty.
Madam Chair, this is Ernie. Some moved.
Seconded by Mike.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Espia.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Thank you, Bob.
For your time, thank you for your time. Everyone stay healthy. Thank you.
Thank you, you as well.
Thanks.
Good hair.
Um, our next item is um items seven B and C. May I have a motion to take those together for discussion purposes?
Member Raven, so moved.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Espia.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Okay, this is Barbara again. Item seven B is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section four point two point six point ten Restaurants of the Zoning Bylaws, seventy-five and eighty-five Middle Six Turnpike, the Burlington Mall, Common Craft Holdings LLC is the applicant. And item seven C is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a site plan, seventy-five and eighty-five Middle Six Turnpike, Burlington Mall, Common Craft Holdings LLC is the applicant.
Hi.
Good evening. Hi, good evening, Madam Chair. For the record, Christine Hung from Reimer and Bronstein, attorney for the applicant, Common Craft Holdings LLC. With me tonight, I have as part of the project team Brett Dennehy, who was a principal at Common Craft, and Albert Cabre, who is our architect from Joe the Architect. We are happy to be back before you tonight on our application for a special permit and site plan review. At our last hearing back in June, I think we gave a thorough and detailed presentation for this unique and innovative um dining proposal and small retail operation. I think overall, the board seems supportive and excited about this crap brewery concept. And, you know, we understand, given the COVID and these virtual hearings, that approval can't be done in one hearing. And so we're back before you tonight um, to answer any additional questions that you may have. So thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Okay, um, uh, Kristin, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Um, no, um, I, not well, we, I just want to say, I mean, I think at the last meeting, um, there was a lot of excitement around the concept. We're excited about the concept. We really liked the thought of local purveyors and the Burlington market. You know, especially at the mall where we just have such a, we have so many kind of national chains at the mall, which, which is good, but it's really nice to see um, some, you know, local, local folks in the market. So that's great. Um, other than that, we did check um some of the distances that were brought up um as to the, where the patio was. The patio is over almost sixty feet from the uh, the curb line um of the roadway, and it's almost seventy-five feet to curb line from the face of the building. So um, I, we feel that there's and are confident there's quite a bit of um both grassed area, there's a planters, there's planters within the landscaped area at the mall um as well as around the patio here. So we're very confident that there's been ability to provide a safe atmosphere for patrons. There's no head-in parking. This isn't at um, a turn within the parking lot. So um, we're excited about the concept, and I, I hope to see, you know, the mall um come back and this in the, you know, see these different users be able to really build out their tenant spaces so we can, you know, see it come to market.
Okay, thank you, Kristin. Um, Member Raymond, did you have any questions or comments? Um, Paul, you might be muted.
I, do you want uh the DBW Engineering and so forth?
We read those at the last meeting. There's nothing new, so um, thank you, though.
Okay, no. Well, I just wanted to make sure that the opponent was uh, uh, you know, okay with this, so familiar with it.
Yep, they're all standard conditions.
Okay, thank you, Christine.
No, the only thing I want to say is I uh, uh, am going to go along since I don't know the exact definition, but everybody last, we were the last meeting, thought this was cool. So I'm cool with it.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Member Covino.
Um, also, Madam Chairman, I, I, I welcome the concept. I, it seems like a, 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 a unique thing and, and should work out well. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Gaffney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, no questions.
Member Espia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Excited to see it. A very interesting, unique concept and no questions. Thank you.
Member Rappaport.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, no questions. I'm just excited to be a patron.
Uh, this is Barbara. I also have no questions, and I'm also excited. I think it's going to be cool, too. May I have a motion, please? Oh, wait.
Close the public hearing in this matter?
I just thought of, no, um, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the listening audience that wanted to ask a question or make a comment? Okay, sounds like no one, so let's move on. Thank you. May I have a motion here? Make a motion.
I'll second Paul's motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
Ma, ma, Chairman Lurie.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Espia.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
So you closed on both matters.
Right.
With that, yep, okay.
Madam Chair, make a uh motion to approve the request of Common Craft Holdings LLC for the special permit pursuant to section four point two point six point ten Restaurants for Article uh four of zoning bylaws at seventy-five and eighty-five Middle Six Turnpike, Burlington Mass, subject to the terms and conditions uh contained in exhibit A, which is attached.
Second.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Espia.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
All right.
I'd like to approve to the next motion.
Yep.
Paul, are you doing the motion?
No, I thought that I, I, I was going to give somebody else a chance to read it.
I'm waiting for.
Is the clerk not going to do all motions?
Yep.
Sure, uh, Madam Chair, Bill here. Motion to approve the request to uh, for approval of a site plan application. That's where we're at. Site plan application.
Yep.
Common Craft Holdings Swamp Scott LLC, properly located at seventy-five and eighty-five Middle Six Turnpike, Burlington Mall, to permit a full-service restaurant use with the internal, external seasonal patio seating and a secondary wine slash malt sales facility. Site plan applications include the designation of a partially enclosed patio area, relocated access egress doors, and building facade enhancements as reflected on the redline site plan entitled Proposed Common Craft Restaurant Five Burlington Mall Road, eleven hundred Middle Six Turnpike, Burlington, Massachusetts, prepared by Vanessa Hagan, Brussels Inc., dated twenty-eight uh, May twenty twenty, consisting of one page in the project floor plans entitled Common Craft Burlington First Plan Area, uh, First Floor Area Plan dated twenty-six May twenty twenty, prepared by Joe the Architect, uh, consisting of one page reflecting the posed ten thousand four hundred and forty plus minus square foot tenant space with two hundred and one interior and thirty-two patios, dining seats, subject to the following revisions, terms, and condition as amended.
This is Mike.
Second.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impumba, uh, I mean, sorry, Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Espia.
Yep.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Welcome.
Madam Chair, make a motion to take items D and G together for discussion purposes.
I just want to say thank you very much, Madam Chair and members of the board. Thanks, thanks a lot.
Thank you, Christine, and welcome to Common Craft. We're all looking forward to seeing you at the mall.
Yeah. Good luck.
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
Second Paul's motion to take item seventy and seventy together for discussion purposes.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Espia.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, item seven D is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section four point three point two point six, outdoor storage of supplies and equipment incidental to permitted use, subject to requirements for location, lighting, screening, fencing, cover, and safety precautions of the zoning bylaws, three seventy-six Cambridge Street. The Granite Place is the applicant. And item seven E is a continued application for approval of a minor engineering change, three seventy-six Cambridge Street, The Granite Place Incorporated is the applicant. Uh, so um, I, I see we have Frank DePietro here. I don't know if there's anyone else from The Granite Place.
Sure. Um, again, for the record, uh, my name's Frank DePietro. I'm a civil engineer with the BSC Group. And somewhere out there in the virtual universe is Carol Gomes, our client, who would like to say a few words before I get into reviewing the engineering and the minor engineering, the minor, uh, the minor engineering change site plans. So Carol, if you're out there, it's, you're up.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I just, I want to say thank you um for your patience, and uh, I want to say that I want to thank you guys because um, you guys with this um motion and everything made us realize that we really need to move. So that's why, I remember Barbara telling me that. So we realized that's the best for us to move. So. So we realized that's the best for us to move. So the fabrication part, like, uh, we talk. I just wanted to say thank you and I'm going to give Frank the, the words right now.
Okay.
Thank you, Carol.
Um, and thank you again. I would agree with the, the patience, um, and not only of the board, but also the staff and their considerations. Appreciate it. Um, so very briefly, you've got a lot ahead of you or behind this project. So I want to go quickly. Um, the, um, our applicant has secured and finally has the lease uh, to relocate the fabrication facility to a, a new place in Wilmington. As part of that relocation, the outside granite slabs and other materials will be relocated. At the present time, the interior of the building fit up is underway. Uh, it probably will take a good month or more. So we're anticipating, but we don't have a firm date that the fabrication will likely be relocated by sometime in September. Um, again, it just depends how fast they can fit out the, um. However, as part of the lease, the applicant can start to relocate some of the exterior slabs, uh, as early as next week. Now, they're going to have to move them slowly and, and they only can put a few in a truck at a time. So that move is going to be taking a, a, a while. But that work should be starting next week and you'll be seeing over the next few weeks and month or so, the slabs being moved off of the site. The board provided some insight and, uh, information last meeting on the 18th of June. We've gone through that with the client and the plan, if Brady could potentially sort of show the plan. Uh, so I don't have to talk from the top of my head. I'd be happy to go over the changes. We've implemented those changes and I just want to go over them with you.
There you go, Frank.
Thank you very much, Brady. I greatly appreciate it. If you weren't around, they'd have to call my nine-year-old granddaughter to help me with this. So, here we go. Um, uh, the first and foremost, you will note that the, uh, fence along Van Norden and a little bit around the corner to block the residential is now a six-foot-high white fence, a solid fence. That's something that the, um, board was very consistent about. You'll also notice that along Van Norden, you don't see any, uh, of the dumpster. We've moved the dumpster, uh, basically to the northerly end of the site as far away as we can, following Bill's suggestion. Um, almost in Bill's record, but not quite. It's up against the property line with, uh, what used to be last year is now the, uh, Northwest Pest, uh, folks. It is, again, physically as far away, that will do a great deal to block any of the movement of vehicles going in and coming out from the neighbors. It certainly will provide the most separation between the dumpster and the folks across the street on, I think it was 387 Cambridge Street. Um, we went back and forth a little bit and realizing that if we moved the dumpster in that, that area, that it might not be a bad idea to move the remnants storage in the same location. So previously, we had the dumpsters stored essentially on the, um, Van Norden Drive side of the, the building. We've now requested to remove those and put them in the back of the building, um, between the, the back of the building and, um, up against the building, about five or six feet out, no more than a total of 500 square feet of material. These are remnants pieces of the granite slab, not big slabs. This will mean there'll be nothing stored nearest the residential areas as far as the slabs go. Um, thank you, Brady, for anticipating, reading my mind. Uh, in the front of the site, we are showing the two landscaped areas. There's a little bit of an issue in that the applicant does not own the property. So any landscaping they propose has to be reviewed and approved by the property owner. So what we're proposing to do, we're in the process of putting together a very detailed landscape plan. Uh, Carol has, uh, requested that they want to incorporate the two existing slabs that are out there right now into that landscaping. And so what they would like to do is provide, um, to the board, a landscape plan to be reviewed and approved by the staff prior to going ahead and, and, and moving ahead with, with the, um, landscaping part. They would like, if the board still chooses to approve this, to grant the special permit, to start the work for the, uh, fencing and stuff as soon as they could, if they get their approval, before they, they do the landscaping. But they want to make sure that they have someone review the landscaping, particularly review it by the landlord, if you will, and then, uh, get their go-ahead to do that work. Uh, remnants. Um, the, there were a couple of issues raised by the abutter, um, across the street. One related to a light. Turns out that, um, the light in question was inadvertently added to the site. There was a gentleman going in and upgrading the lighting, uh, replacing lights and thought that they needed a new light. It was added without permission. Uh, my understanding is that light has been taken down. Uh, and there will, that issue with regard to the, the abut is at 387 should no longer exist. Um, with regards to moving the dumpster, um, that again, is going to get rid of that issue. And, uh, the vibrations that they have heard are tied to the fabrication. So they're still working to make sure they do their fabricate, their work after eight o'clock in the morning. But once the fabrication, uh, section of the building is removed, that's going to go away. It won't be a further problem. Uh, if you could sort of shift it down a little bit, uh, to the bottom, Brady. Um, we don't have an architectural rendering because we're not really changing the building. But we, what we thought was more pertinent is we, we put a cross-section. Can go down a little bit farther. It's in the very bottom of the page. We, we wanted to show a cross-section of the site and Brady, if you can move it a little bit to the right. I'm sorry to sort of direct you so much there. Um, I'm sorry, the, um, the other right.
Other way. There we go.
There you go. So what we wanted to show is if someone was standing or parked on Van Norden Drive, uh, we put together a cross-section that would show one, what they would see and provided some heights. Now, the elevations that we're showing here are based upon the, uh, record site plan. So if you were standing on Van Norden Drive, you'd see that slope that goes up about four feet. You then see that continues to go up about another foot or so from the, um, steep part of the slope to the flat area. We've got a six-foot-high fence. From the top of that fence to the ground on Van Norden, the distance is about 11 and a half feet. So again, that fence is, and that the gray change is going to very effectively screen the area of the site. Many residents on Van Norden are driving down Van Norden. I think that provides sort of a really good area. At this point, the other items that are shown on the, um, red line site plan, showing the snow storage, addressing the handicap, restriping the parking spaces. All those will be done in that area between the fence, uh, and the building. It's a parking lot, basically. Um, there will be some small vans parked in there, but not the larger vans. They will be relocated off the site to Wilmington with the new fabrication. Um, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, um, the board may have, and Carol's available as well.
Okay, thank you, Frank. Um, this is Barbara again. Kristen, did you have anything you wanted to add before I turn this over to the board?
Sure. Well, um, so I'm pleased to see that, um, that the storage has been moved to the back. It's a smaller area. Um, the dumpsters moved to the back. So I think a lot of the things that we've been talking about, um, in terms of activity, um, is moving as kind of far, to the farthest corner possible. The, um, the, the kind of trailer that's out there and the other kind of the random equipment is all being removed. Um, you see the note at the back of the building, um, existing trailer and other materials to be removed that I, I know have been noticed by, by board members. Um, as, uh, Frank mentioned, they don't own the site. Um, and they are in the process of moving fabrication to Wilmington, which I think is, is very encouraging. Um, we have some conditions, um, and I have to check a little in the special permit for the activities of fabrication, which I hope and understand will be moved by September. But just as we've talked about along this whole discussion of just making sure that there's no washing of equipment outside. There's no, um, fabrication with doors open that were bothering the neighbors, but everything's closed. Um, again, and hopefully that, that's all being removed and the, the building itself will be used for storage and showroom um, versus any of the fabrication activities. Um, with that, the minor engineering changes with the special permit for outdoor storage. Um, and so therefore they're kind of tied together. I'm encouraged that they're looking to do landscaping improvements as well as the fence. Um, and I think the scaling back of what was on, what was originally, drastically scaling back what was originally proposed is very encouraging. Um, in terms of the landscaping, we have a condition that, um, that they, the landscaping in front must consist of year-round and seasonal plantings that are both low and higher, uh, higher taller. Anyway, higher, higher than four feet. So it's kind of a diverse, diverse in height, diverse in species. No more than 25% being mulch. Um, so just making sure that we're not getting, you know, those tiny plants with just mulch all around it. And then looking into the granite pieces, I know we talked about this, is we really didn't want that big A-frame there. But if there's a way to integrate the granite pieces into the landscaping, that was encouraged. Um, and I threw in kind of the, the granite not being large, higher than four feet. That was kind of a random number. I, I, what I didn't want was kind of these like big 10-foot slabs just out there, um, leaning on something. So more, as I think Member Impamba mentioned at one of the meetings, more, um, or Member Cavino, integrated into the landscape itself. Um, so with that, um, and that's also to be reviewed and approved by the planning director and chairman, um, before that goes in. So, um, with that, I, we recommend, uh, we would recommend favorably, um, to the board, uh, especially with the scaled-down, um, activities and the added fence. Um, and again, it's just one of these projects that have been here for a while that I think the, what's, what you see in front of you will greatly improve the area and neighborhood around the, the building, whether they're here or whoever the next tenant is. So I think it'll benefit for the neighborhood for a while.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, let's see what the board thinks. Member Raymond.
Uh, I think everything's there that we asked for. It looks good to me. So I say, uh, you know, I'm in favor of approving it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Member Cavino.
Um, it looks much better than it did in the beginning. I think it was worth the effort. It did take a long time. I'd, I'd be willing to vote in favor of it as it stands. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Member Gaffney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I, I have concerns on this one. Uh, I consistently have concerns about the, the outdoor storage. Um, again, the, the, the history here, um, from when, uh, we, uh, we originally had seen this back, probably going back to probably a year ago or so more, uh, if I look at my pictures what I took. Where the storage was before and currently is today, it goes past that, um, that berm in the back. So it did come back at one point and now it's creeping back there. So I am very concerned about any outdoor storage that they have of this that will get into, to, uh, to creep. It will just, you know, have that area, talking about 500 square feet and increases. It goes back. It's, it goes back over that berm. I, I'm just, I, I'm not confident at all that that will stay where it is. So I would be opposed to any outdoor storage. Uh, the two slabs or any sort of granite, uh, out in front, uh, to go into with the landscaping. That to me is an additional signage. We've talked about this before, that if it has something to do with the business itself, is considered a sign. I would oppose any, uh, granite in there. I would just prefer a straight landscaping like everybody else and have the signage, which is completely all over this building with the awning, just be the, the existing signage. You can't miss it. It's red. It goes completely over the sign and around the corner, as you can see with the awning. Uh, my question I have, uh, with, with the, the dumpster. Again, I'm trying to figure out why you have it all the way back against the, by, by terminus curving. Um, again, that, that curving is in very terrible shape, if you've seen it, because it's been getting, taken a beating with the granite as the granite's gone, popped over that. Um, and, and maybe we take a look at that granite that could, the, uh, the, the terminus curving to see if that can be redone. That's, that's in very crappy shape. Um, and, uh, I, I look here at what that says is a dumpster and in this truck storage. So maybe you can, somebody can tell me about what this truck storage area is going to be, what kind of trucks going to be there.
Um, I'll be very happy to address that. That, there's, there'll be no truck there. That's supposed to be dumpster pad and what will be in there is, um, and some of the folks call the dumpster itself a, a truck because the truck picks up that thing and either takes it off, replaces it. It is basically a dumpster pad and a dumpster. However, where you want to classify what that dumpster box is, it is a dumpster. It'll be closed inside a wooden, um, four-foot-high wooden fence. There's no truck itself storage in that, at that location. It's really dumpster, physical dumpster itself.
Okay, so may, maybe the, maybe the wording can be changed on that because I'm not familiar. Every other plan that I've seen, you know, my, my, my five, six years on this board, my 15 years on the Board of Appeals, I've never seen a dumpster called truck storage.
Gotcha.
That's a new term. I don't know why that was put there. So, yeah, so I, I, I'd be in favor of this with, uh, the condition that there'd be no part of that landscaping, there'd be no granite and that there'd be no outdoor storage.
I mean, if I could just make, uh, sort of a quick comment back, uh, Bill. Um, we are very clearly showing that the storage of the granite is up against the building. So it is as far away as that from that part of the site from the back. Um, we're limiting the size of that area. It's about six feet out from the building, total square footage of about 500 square feet. If we're outside of that area and once this, if this plan is approved, we are in violation.
Yeah, I'm, I'm aware of that. There's a lot of violation going on there. So that's why, you know, even when, you know, it's taken off the curb, it goes back. So I, I understand that. Um, it may be what you, you, you do is you put a fence around that so you're, you're hard, limited to the 500 feet there. You put a fence with the gate. And so that's where your storages of your remnants. And since they're going to be small, you don't need to get a truck in there, right? Um, if that's, if, if you put a fence around that and that's the only place you're going to store that outside, uh, that would be okay by me. But otherwise, if you're going to keep, keep it free-forming to that, I would not be able to support that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member Gaffney. Uh, Member Espia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Frank, on the, the granite in the front, um, did I hear correctly, there's going to be two pieces now?
So physically what's out there right now are two slabs leaning up against one of the to make a V or an A. So those would be the two slabs that would be out there.
But what we have written in there now is that it won't be higher than four feet. It's to the discretion of the staff in our chair to approve what you come up with as long, after the landscaping is completed. Is that how we have it written?
We have it written so it's integrated into the landscaping and not just a, an outdoor storage. That it's, if they want to use some sort of granite, um, that if it can be like, you know, granite would be integrated into landscape. We're open to that, but not just the, the A-frame slab.
But it would have to be lower than four feet tall?
That's what, as I said, that's what we threw out there in terms of just making sure it wasn't those like, you know, 10 by 10-foot big pieces that would be problematic in terms of site distance and other things. And as well as, you know, really be showing, you know, directly the product that's being sold inside where, um...
I guess, I mean, again, I drive by the site at least twice a day and, um, it just looks terrible out there. And I'm not, I just always have been trying to think of what's the reasoning behind that, uh, other than the huge red awning that says granite. And my asking people if they've ever, trying to find someone who's never heard of granite or can describe it. Um, I guess if we can keep it under four feet tall and if you guys are going to look at it and, um, Barbara's going to look at it, make sure that it, it looks decent, as long as it doesn't look trashy like it does now, then I guess, I guess it could be in for it. I just still don't see the point, but we have it written like that. I guess I'll reluctantly go along with it. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mike. Member Rappaport.
Um, I, I just can mirror what Mike is saying as far as, uh, the exterior, the granite and the exterior. Um, other than that, I think we've captured, uh, all of our discussion points in, in this plan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This is Barbara. Um, I would agree with, with Bill that I would be more comfortable with the outdoor storage if it had a, a fence around it, even if it was just, um, sort of a two-sided fence so that one side is the building and then you have two sides and then an opening on one side. So then it's very clearly, that's the only place where these, where the slabs are allowed and it's, there's no question as to whether or not they're creeping. So I think that was a good idea. In terms of the granite storage out front, um, we're going to see a landscaping plan right now. So I'm speaking to the applicant now. If you want to store, have some granite in the front as part of your landscape, I think you have to make it blend in, almost make it look like a really pretty rock. Not just a rock, but make it part of the design. So it's not just a slab stuck in with a bunch of bushes. If you can make it look like it, it belongs there, um, and, and make it an attractive part of the landscape, then I would be much more amenable to it. Again, I do agree that it needs to be below, less than four feet tall. Again, I do agree that it needs to be below, less than four feet tall as any rock that you've had in your landscaping probably would be significantly less than that. So those are my comments. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to ask a question or comment on this matter? Brady and Jen, I'm assuming you see no one?
Barbara, I am not seeing anyone.
Okay, all right. Okay.
I'm not seeing anyone either.
Thank you, Jen. So Frank, based on what we've, what you've heard from us, do you have any feedback or questions?
I do not at this point.
Carol, actually Carol's here too. We should ask Carol as well.
Carol, do you have any comments on what you've heard?
No.
Okay.
Can we clarify a little bit, just because it was brought up twice, but really I don't have a a good sense from all of the board that are sitting there in terms of the outdoor storage in the back. So we do have a requirement that they stripe on the ground that 500 square feet. So it's very clear when you're in or out by both the user as well as anyone looking into the site to enforce. But we talked a little bit about this concept of fencing around the storage area and I guess I want to flush that out a little bit before we conclude just to figure out if that's something that we wanted to put in conditions. There's two out of the six of you brought it up, so I just wanted to flush it out with the other members.
Madam Chair?
Please go ahead.
Could I ask both, either Frank or Carol, since Carol's also here, is there a reason that they cannot put a fence around? I don't see a reason. Is, maybe I'm not seeing what they, they might have as a reason. Frank, is there a reason why there isn't, can't be a fence around the outside storage of remnants?
Can I say something, Frank?
Sure, go ahead.
So the remnants, why we have the remnants there is because we sell little pieces if people are looking for vanities, right? So the only reason why we want to leave that little back area, some remnants, is for people to see if, because everything's going to be inside storage. So it's just to see if they need, like any remnant that is out back. I mean, I'm not going to put much there because I can't. So that's why I don't know why I need to put a fence there because it's not going to be the way it is now. It's going to be a lot less. That's all my comment.
It seems to me, if I'm hearing everybody correctly, that some of the board members would be more comfortable if there was more than just painted lines on the ground. And I would kind of concur with them. It's only, it's only, so you'd have to put a 50-foot by, say, 10-foot fence up. That 60 feet of fencing is not, not a lot. Even if it had, even if it had barn doors on it or something so you could open it wide enough to people to see it, you know what I mean?
Well, some of the comments was not to have like completely all the way around, but maybe just on the, I mean, what was, Barbara, you mentioned it, to not have it all the way around. So the Van Norden side and then?
Yeah, the building, parallel to the building. Five and, or 10 and 50 feet would be the fence, I imagine. It's a 50-foot run parallel to the building and feet out.
Right, somewhere in that range.
But it was at least six feet out.
We had gone, so the parking spaces were about eight to nine feet. So we're going down about seven. That gets you around the 50 feet or so. So I was looking at maybe six feet or so, or something maybe a little bit less than that. Carol, could you put a low fence around there or something? The concern I have, and I don't know your business, is do you need to get access in to look at the slabs physically? And so would a fence basically prohibit you from doing that? If it's something that you can either reach over or had a couple of openings on or something like that, would that work, Carol?
Yeah, so I need to grab, let's say somebody picks something, I need to grab it with the forklift. I mean, as long as, maybe as long as it's open and it's only fenced around it, I think I still can. But it's going to be just a little hard, I think.
Well, is the issue that we see it or the issue that it's going to creep past that painted area?
I think it's a creep issue, at least.
It's a creep issue because there's not really anyone back there to see it.
Yeah, it's a creep issue.
I mean, Carol?
If that's the case, I would be very satisfied with two walls, so to speak, of the fence. The third wall is the building itself and then you could have a wide opening. You could even get a forklift in there to take things out.
I guess, again, this is maybe for Carol. Where would you be, would you be coming from the back of the site into the storage area? And where I'm going with this is if you have to, I'm not sure you can drive parallel to the building. You had something at the back that someone wanted to get to, how would you get to that? So the question I have is if you put, I don't know, whatever the width of a forklift, a bunch of posts, if forklift could get between coming from the back of the site toward the building to get a piece out, would that work? It's not exactly a fence, but it is some kind of a barrier that would very clearly delineate where the limit of putting material in and you'd have access? Or would you be able to put gaps in there? So in other words, you might have six feet or eight feet, let's say six feet out from the building, 10 feet or eight feet long, there'd be an opening where there'd be no storage and then you could have a fence and that would be your access in to get the parcels, the pieces you need and the remnants. What's more work for you, Carol?
So you're saying to put posts around it?
Well, I'm trying to have a way that delineates it but allows access for a forklift to get a piece out that's down seven and a half feet and three feet in the middle of this storage area, something like that, say.
What if you just put a piece along the van, like along a parking space at Van Norden side? And then a piece, and then left two openings on both ends? And then a piece kind of, see where it says parking spaces? Like a piece kind of in the middle, so you're delineating it, but you're not fully enclosing it.
Oh, Kristen, we're not putting anything near Van Norden.
No, no, I just, I was just using Van Norden as the reference to the parking space I was talking about. No, I appreciate that. Thank you. So I guess, is this, I guess what I want to do, if we can condition it, I can, I think the chairman and I can figure out a solution, but I need to understand if the intent is, if it's the creep intent, I think we can find a solution among the chairman and myself. And it is to ways to delineate that area appropriately.
Right.
I want to hear that. Again, I want to hear from Mike and Brenda as well on that issue.
Yeah, and this is Barbara. I'm questioning whether it might actually be more expensive to put a bunch of posts in than it would be to just put up a fence. The fence might be less expensive to do, especially if you're just doing two sides. But that's something I'm, I'm okay with working that out later, but as you said, let's hear from the other remaining members.
Okay.
Madam Chair, this is Mike. The fence really isn't a deal breaker for me. I've driven a forklift and to try and maneuver through posts and moving around a big piece of granite, it'd be really tough, but I'm just fine with the painting, but it's just my opinion. Go ahead.
Thanks, Brenda.
Well, I've never driven a forklift, but I will, you know, I'm not opposed one way or the other. You know, if they wanted to put a fence, great. If they don't, I think the painting's sufficient. But you know, it is, you know, I hope the applicant is hearing us and has heard our concerns strongly about, you know, that we're concerned about granite creeping. And that's all.
Okay, so.
So what is Paul Raymond, Member Raymond, what's your thought?
My thought on this is that if I'm not sure, I like to leave it to somebody else, which is Barbara and Kristen.
Well, let me ask this question of Carol, because it's your business and you're the one who would have to, you know, maneuver around the fence if there was one and you'd be the one who has to install it. Would you be amenable to two sections of fence so that you have a wide opening? You can get in and out of easily with a forklift, but it satisfies Mr. Gaffney's concerns, my concerns? It actually probably will look nicer and I think it would be easier to maneuver around than a bunch of posts. Would that work for you, Carol?
Yeah, I think a fence, if I can do only two, would be better than the post. The post might be dangerous because the forklift could hit it.
Right.
Yeah.
Let's condition it that way since that seems to satisfy both the property, the business owner. It satisfies me and Bill and I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think the other board members were objecting to the fence. They were just questioning its necessity. Am I correct?
Correct.
Right. Maybe my vision, this is Bill, my vision of remnants is different. Remnants, just with anything you think of as a remnant. I have remnants in my business that I work for and it's small leftovers. Example, right? So maybe that in this, in the granite, so you need a fork truck to get a remnant. So would it be half or less of maybe a 10-foot by, you know, a five-foot slab? Or what are the remnant sizes are you thinking there? Because I'm usually thinking remnants, you're going to be talking just small sizes of things that you could probably get a two-wheeler in to get them all.
No, there is, they're heavy. Some stones are heavier than others.
Yeah. How big are you talking though?
Six feet, some six feet, some seven, some four.
Yeah, so that, so that for me doesn't sound, my visualization of remnants, kind of my general perception of remnants, doesn't sound like a remnant, right? But you're probably working with much larger pieces like you have out front.
Yeah.
Our pieces are more, are like four, some 13 feet by eight feet.
So, so they got to be outside because you're going to bring people out. So you've got your showroom area there and then the rest of the storage space. You've got a lot of storage space there. That's, you know, three times the size of your showroom. Are you increasing the showroom now to take over some of the storage space? Or what's in that storage space that you can't put the remnants there? And you can bring the fork truck in and out of those overhead doors?
That I have a lot.
So let me, let me just, may keep on just asking the next question down if I may, Madam Chair. So in this storage space that you have, you have now, you've got all of the, you're putting over your, you showcase where you had over to the right, it's now going on to the sister's thrift, right? And you got all the rest of the area which you did your manufacturing at, which is now going to be storage space. Right? And that's, so everything you had from a manufacturing standpoint is now gone and you get all the storage space. You have, the storage space to me looks about the size, give or take, as the outside stores that you had before, right?
No, it's less.
It is less, but I mean, it's not, it's not half, right? Consider where you've got the things lined up today in the back and you've got some there. So if you, let me ask you this. Are you moving any of your slabs you have there over to your manufacturing site? Or is your manufacturing site just going to be a manufacturing site and you're moving your slabs, what you have, what you're going to be in your storage space, over to your manufacturing site?
No, we're going to do both.
Going to do both?
Yes. So some inside and some on the new manufacturing.
Sorry, can you repeat that?
So some storage inside where is Unit C, where the fabrication is now, and then more some that moved to Wilmington as well.
So Bill, I'm trying to figure out what you're getting at. If Carol's willing to do the fence, is that not acceptable to you?
Well, I'm just saying maybe she doesn't even have to do it, right? But if she's willing to do the fence that you're going to agree to, let's move on with that. I'm just saying that if she's got storage in Wilmington and she can kind of make the storage, whatever she's got to do for remnants and it's not a big area, right? Considering the storage area that she's now gaining because of manufacturing is, maybe it's a moot point that we don't even have to worry about, that everything's inside. You know, there's no trucks having to go in and out to disturb the neighborhood. Continued outdoor storage, everything's inside, everything's contained. The neighbors are happy, we're happy, everything's closed doors. I'll tell you that. And also I'm just thinking, you know, if you have space in Wilmington, you know, that you're going to move over to storage to, then you get plenty of storage here and, you know, I'm just trying to think, why do you need this extra storage outside? And that's where I'm just, you contain that up and I'll be okay based on the chairman's thought on that.
I think if we have the fence there, it would satisfy my concerns. And I know that there are other improvements that are going to be done here that I think we really want to see done, the landscaping and the fencing especially. So it would be my preference to try to get this resolved tonight and I'm okay with the fence.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
If you're okay with the fence, I think we can move on.
Well, I'll vote as I vote. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right. Does anybody else have anything they want to say? Okay. So I guess it's time for a motion. Who wants to make it?
I'll do it if you want to. Request a minor engineering change for a properly located 176 Cambridge Street to restripe 11 standard parking spaces and one handicapped accessible space. Construct a handicapped accessible curb ramp. Extend sidewalk along the 12 parking spaces. Construct six-foot stockade fence. Fence along the perimeter to provide security and screening from the neighboring properties and to relocate the existing dumpster pad with a wooden enclosure, surrounding it as reflected on the red line site plan entitled The Granite Place, 374, 376 Cambridge Street, Burlington, Massachusetts, prepared by BSC Group dated March 2019 and revised July 14, 2020, consisting of one sheet, subject to the following terms, following revisions, terms, and whatever Barbara wants on there as far as the fence is there.
I'll second that.
As amended. We don't want my name in there.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Chairman LaRue?
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond?
Yes.
Member Cavino?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
No.
Member Espo?
Yes.
Member Rappaport?
Yes.
Okay, can I make a second motion for the special permit, which is actually not in there that it should be?
Yeah, I just wondered about that.
Yes, so I will read it to you and you can second it. So, motion to approve the request of The Granite Place Incorporated for a special permit pursuant to Section 4326, outdoor storage of supplies and equipment incidental to permitted uses of Article 4 of the zoning bylaws at 376 Cambridge Street, Burlington, Mass., subject to the terms and conditions contained in Exhibit B attached.
I will make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Chairman LaRue?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Pemba? Ah, sorry, Member Clerk Raymond?
Yes.
Member Cavino?
Yes.
Member Gaffney? Member Espo?
Yes.
Member Rappaport?
Yes.
Okay, so both are 5-1-0. So it passes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Frank. Thank you, Carol. I know this has been a very long and difficult process, but we appreciate you working with us and I think this is going to be much better site for the neighbors and hopefully really good for your business as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again for your consideration and time. Have a good rest of your night.
Thanks, Randy. All right, moving on, we are going on to Item 7F, which is a public hearing. A location for approval of a defi- All right. Moving on, we are going on to Item 7F, which is a public hearing, a location for approval of a definitive subdivision plan. Zero Birch Street. James Danaher is the applicant. Is Mr. Danaher here?
Good evening, Madam Chairman. Thomas Murphy here for Mr. Danaher. I believe he's also present on the, on the call. Just by way of background, the lot in question here has a little over 9,000 square feet. It's got 98 feet of frontage on Birch Street, which is a paper street in front of this lot. The lot was created in a subdivision plan that was approved back in 1906. Clearly it doesn't meet current zoning, but it did meet the minimum zoning back at the time, which was 5,000 square feet, 50 feet of frontage. And the building inspector in a letter dated September 5th, 2019 stated that this would be a legal conforming buildable lot. If the planning board gives the approval for the extending constructing of the section of Birch Street, which is currently a paper road. So we're here tonight on a subdivision approval, even though we're not subdividing any land, nor are we creating any new streets. But as we've had this discussion before, the only process that is available in Burlington to build out a previously approved paper street is by submitting a subdivision approval application. The building inspector has opined that we must build out at least 50 feet of the, of Birch Street to meet, to meet the 50 foot requirement that was in existence back when this plan was approved, 1906. However, and it's my understanding that the extent and the nature of the buildout is up to the planning board. And that's pretty much the focus of what our application is here this evening. The plan submitted with the application, and Brady's put it up here on the screen, is the shaded area. It's a 12 foot driveway essentially, running from the existing paved Birch Street up to the area where the house, the proposed house would be constructed. Obviously, it's not as wide as a street. Most typical street in Burlington is 24, 25, 26 feet wide. That's probably similar to what the current existing Birch Street is. However, I would point out that the proposed lot is the only lot that's going to be using this access. Birch Street, as the paper street goes from what we're looking at here, a few feet up and eventually goes out to Hillside. It borders on a few lots, a couple on the right side and one on the left side. All of those lots have frontage on other streets, be it Maple Street or, or Hillside. Or the back end of Birch Street. So there would be no other properties, no other houses using this access. So the, the feeling is when we came up with this proposal, is it really didn't make a lot of sense to construct a 24 to 26 foot wide roadway for a house that's, for a road that's going to only access one house. It would just unnecessarily cause disruption in the neighborhood, be a lot of trees, a lot of shrubbery, whatever coming down, a lot of disruption in the area. So we're here obviously to build out a road in conjunction with the building department's construction. But I would submit that using the discretion available to the planning board, something less than a full 24 foot wide roadway would satisfy proper and adequate access to this wooden house that would be built on this, on this lot.
Okay. Tom, before we get too far, I'm sorry to interrupt, before we get too far into the details of the plan. I know that staff has been looking at this and has had extensive conversations with our town council about it.
Okay.
And it's my understanding that before we even get into the construction of the road and whether or not it should be, you know, what, how wide it should be and how it should be built out. What we need first from you, according to our town council, is a proof plan showing that a layout that conforms to the rules and regulations of subdivision land in Burlington is possible on this site. Now, once you prove that, then we together may decide that, that isn't in the best interest of the neighborhood and, and may decide to grant up all these waivers and to make the, the entryway narrower and, and all these other things that you're talking about. If we can determine that doing that is in the public interest and, and also is not inconsistent with subdivision law. But before we can even get to all of those details, we need you first to show us that proof plan. That's what town council has advised us.
So you want to have a plan that shows we can lay out a 25 foot wide street and a 40 foot wide right of way?
Right. Not that we want you to do it. We want you to show.
I mean, obviously, I'm happy to do that. I, I, it's, I frankly don't understand the logic behind it because we've got a 40 foot wide roadway looking at us on, on paper. So clearly you can put a street within that 40 foot.
Well.
What, what, what else? Is there something else that she's looking for?
That was the advice we got from town council. And then she also advised us that we needed to make a determination about all of the waivers that they are actually in the best interest of
Okay.
the people of Burlington, not just this particular applicant or even just this particular neighbor. But it, in the interest of the, so we need you to provide us with that plan. But also, well, how, what you would present to us is why this is in the best interest of the town of Burlington, to allow it.
To allow a house to be built on this lot? Or to, to build out the street? Or I guess I'm not, what's, what's, to, to, to show what's in the best.
All of the waivers so that it could be built out. Am I, am I, I'm not sure, maybe I'm not phrasing this clearly, Kristen, can you help me out? Am I, am I messing this up? Because you had a longer conversation with town council. I didn't actually speak with her. Can you, am I?
Yeah, so, um, we, um, so, sorry, um, just had a visitor, so I got distracted. Someone got up in. Anyway, so the, one of the things that we wanted to take a look at for not just this subdivision, but a few of the others that are on this evening is when we're looking at waivers, and I, I did talk to the county, the town council, just to ask her a couple of questions about the items that are in front of us and, you know, some. But when we're looking at the waiver requests, how should we be looking, looking at them? And how should we be understanding them in terms of can we, if building out the full subdivision per the rules and regs? As all of you know, is that if you met all the rules and regs, you essentially have to approve the subdivision because it's completely in line with those rules and regs. When waivers are entertained, which they're very common to, we, we do grant quite a bit of waivers in town. But when we're looking at them, especially in kind of these non-traditional buildouts, we want to make sure that we're one, the subdivision is able to be built per subdivision rules, the rules and regs governing subdivision of land in Burlington. And if the waivers and how the waivers make that subdivision better and, you know, to quote the statute, in the public interest. So when we're looking, so you're kind of backing out from, if you were fully compliant, what would that look like? Is that right for the neighborhood? And then back out the waivers as to why the waivers actually make it better, less impact to the neighborhood and whatever, you know, physical features in the property. So in order to kind of work through those waivers and justification for the waivers, it's helpful to kind of find a starting point from a, a proof, a proof plan, which is a proof, it's not fully engineered drainage and stormwater, but it's kind of just the layout in terms of the, the regulation governing subdivision of land.
Okay.
So that's, that's kind of where we are and then backing out into the justification for the waivers and why they actually do very much make sense and for what reason.
Okay. No, I understand. Obviously, I don't have that with me this evening, so I assume we're going to be continuing this into August. So I will speak to the surveyor and the engineer and try to get something put together before the next meeting. Is there anything else other than showing that we can instruct a, a road per the regs within that Birch Street, Paper Street? And an explanation for the waivers or anything else in that plan that town council was looking for or that the board would want, want to see?
Um, it's my understanding that's what town council was looking for. And I'm sure the board, the board is going to have, once, once that's, assuming that is presented and you can do it. And then I think we'll get into all the details. I'm sure board members are going to have a lot of questions then. But let me just quickly ask them if anyone has any questions at this level tonight. And I'm just going to let people jump in. Anyone?
Ma- Madam Chairwoman, if you may, I don't know if it's open to the public and, but for, for the record, Attorney James Giuliani, representing a few landowners. If I may speak, I don't know if that, that question was directed for the public yet, but.
Ask you to hold on for just one minute. I wanted.
You're misinterpreting. My, not a problem.
No, no, it's quite all right. Please don't apologize. I just want to see if there are any board members that have questions for Attorney Murphy before I turn it over to the public.
Uh, Barbara, Paul, I have a question. This is the first I've seen of this. But is this essentially a buy right if we don't allow all these modifications and so forth? Or do they have to get certain decisions from us to even build in there?
Well, I think that's what the attorney, what the town council was getting at. They need to prove that they would be able to do this and abide by all the rules and regulations for subdivision law. If they can do that, then we would have to approve it. So therefore, let's first show that it can be done and then we can try and figure out how to improve it with waivers. Does that make sense?
It does. Thank you. So I think we ought to wait for that.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you, Paul. Anyone else on the board want to ask any questions or anything they want Mr. Murphy to work on before he comes back in August? So we give him as much information as we can.
Well, Barbara, this is Ernie. Maybe while the, while the engineer is putting together that, I guess you'd call it, proof plan. Can he maybe show some more detail about the surrounding houses or properties in the area? So we can have a better feel of it.
Location or?
Yeah, just, just general location on the lot.
A budding property?
Randed out a bit?
Please.
Okay. Thank you. Good point, Ernie. Anyone else?
He's doing it anyways. I mean, yeah.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'll send Madam Chair, this is Bill.
Right. So, um, thank you, Madam Chair. So, thank you. So now, members of the audience are, are welcome to speak. So Attorney.
Giuliani, thank you, Madam Chairman. Yes, apologies for that. For the record, Attorney Giuliani, thank you, representing a few landowners. We, we do see an issue with this. We, we feel like that, that the applicant cannot build without the waivers. And then when you get into it a little bit, the waivers that they're seeking are, are 24 waivers. So, you know, I, I would sort of make the argument that, okay, even if the applicant could build without waivers, the applicant is asked for a significant amount of waivers, which clearly goes against the, the intent of the subdivision control laws. You can see maybe one or two that maybe will have an insignificant impact on the neighborhood. But we're talking some serious impacts that are being asked to be waived. For one, we have some, uh, uh, some severe grading issues. If you look at Zero Birch Street, it starts at about 180 for, for a grade. The, the, the street's going to go down to about 172 as proposed. So we have about an eight foot grade that probably spans about 20 feet. So as you can see, it's not like everything is sort of going into a, a flat surface. There's going to be some, some grading that is necessary. There's going to be some retaining walls that are necessary to sort of shoehorn the street in there.
Mr. Giuliani?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but, um, first, before anything else can happen, they have to prove that they can build out this site without waivers. Then the waivers would be considered to improve the situation there. So I understand you have concerns and I, I, you're going to need to have your time to go through them all. I'm not trying to cut you off, but I just wanted to make sure that everyone understands we're trying not to get into the details of the site yet because we don't even know if they can get past that first step.
Fair enough. Fair enough. Certainly fair enough. I am, absolutely.
I think I might have lost you.
So that being said.
Mr. Giuliani disappeared.
You there?
Maybe he lost connection. Let's give him, oh, wait, you're back. No, I think we lost you for a minute. So I'm not sure when you, when you got cut off, I was just saying.
I, I heard you. So, so basically, Madam Chairman, what you're saying is, so I'm not going to bore you with the details. And so I would ask too, to, to sort of make your determination on that as well as to, to check a site visit if, if the planning board would, would, it would not be a objective to that. Because again, one of the major concerns with the waivers is the grading. So again, our argument would be that without waivers, this is not possible. But the, the number one waiver that we have concern about is the grading that's being waived along with the drainage that obviously consequentially comes about with the drainage, with the, the grading, excuse me. So, so again, not, not to bore you with our argument and details, I would just ask that the, the board entertain that. And then again, we can come back in August and sort of go into a little bit more detail.
Thank you. And we will. We'll do that in, in great detail. And I do think that a site visit is probably a very good idea. We just have to determine if we should be doing that. And I'll work with staff, should we be doing that before the August meeting or after the August meeting? But I do think a site visit would be a good idea. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, if I may ask, I, I did not see on the website anything from the fire department, any comments? Was that, was that by chance?
Do we have any department comments, Kristen?
I don't see anything. Let me see what's there.
I think it was building which Attorney Murphy mentioned, but I think that was the only one I saw.
Yes, Barbara, as today, in our online permitting site, this is Brady. We did not have any further department comments other than what is within the staff report.
So we will be getting those though, Mr. Giuliani.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else in the listening audience that had a question or comment on this? Mr. Murphy?
This is.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry?
I'm sorry?
Oh, I, I didn't hear.
Mike and Rosemary Farrell.
Oh, hi. Hi.
Yeah. Yeah, we are residents of 4 Sycamore Street of Butters to the property. Before I comment, if I could just ask a question, I admitted a correspondence earlier today which included a sheet signed by some of Butters in the neighborhood that owed to the project. I just want to confirm whether that was received by the board?
Um, I have not seen it, but hopefully it's received by our staff and will be distributed to us shortly. Have you received that, staff?
Yes.
Okay.
I saw it. It's in the folder.
Oh, okay.
It was received. If it hasn't already been distributed to your email boxes, it will be.
Sorry, I, I think we lost Kristen for a minute.
I will forward it to you.
We will definitely see what you sent over and we will all consider that very carefully. Did you have any specific questions or comments that you wanted to make?
Yes, and I know it's been a long evening, so I'm not going to go through each point in detail. But I did want to emphasize a couple of things. One, which Attorney Giuliani touched on briefly is.
Can anyone hear me? I think I'm the one who's out now. Oh, boy.
We can hear you.
Can hear you.
Oh, excuse me. I, I lost my screen went blank, so I thought maybe I was cut off. So, Mr. and Mrs. Farrell, are you still there?
I am. Can you still hear us?
I can now. Sorry about that. These web meetings are challenging.
Thank you. I know it's difficult without being present. So the lot in issue is, is heavily wooded. In addition to the grading that Attorney Giuliani pointed out, from the beginning of the street down to Wildwood, there's actually an additional grade difference shown on the plan that was submitted of approximately 14 feet. When we built our house originally, we actually had to relocate the house slightly due to ledge that's in the area. There's quite a bit of ledge in this particular area. Subject went to that. We did an addition on our kitchen. We had to do the same thing. The original house had a entrance to the basement at the rear property line that would fill with water when we got significant rain, which eventually forced us to close that door and provide different entrance through the garage because of the amount of water. So I think there's a, there's a vein of ledge that runs to the rear of our property line, which would be to the rear of the lot in question. So a combination of that previous ledge issue and eliminating a significant amount of mature vegetation or trees that's on the lot, combined with the grade elevation issue, we certainly have some concerns about water impact, if anything, were done on that lot. In addition to. I'm sorry?
No, please go ahead.
Okay. In addition to that, the plan. Okay. Um, in addition to that, the plan that was submitted, um, shows very little detail about the neighborhood. It does not show the Lozano property, and I believe Lozano's maybe on this call as well. Nor does it show the original Danaher house. In addition, it was built to the Danaher house, um, a pool that was put in on the property and a fence that I believe is actually constructed on the paper street. So in terms of density, I, I think that the, the plan submitted, um, lacks a lot of detail that really doesn't enable the board to understand what the impact is on the neighborhood. Um, as I indicated in my letter earlier today, we're 37-year residents of the town. Certainly enjoy the, you know, the, the character, the nature of the town. What's being proposed, in our opinion, or I think in the opinion of all the neighbors, uh, would significantly have a negative impact on our property values. And I, and I'll even go further and say, I think it's inconsistent with the character of what we've always known the town to be. As we all know and benefit from the, the value of property in this town is increasing significantly in particular the last five to 10 years. That's, that's good on one hand. I think one of the potential downsides of that created incentive to basically build anywhere and everywhere in town. And I respectfully submit that this is the type of application that the town boards are designed to prevent from happening in this town to not destroy the character of the town. Again, we appreciate the, the opportunity and, you know, present that viewpoint, but I, I think a site visit, uh, more detail on the plan. I would submit that the, the board should not consider this application.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Farrell. Thank you. Um, if this moves forward, we will definitely be looking for a more detailed plan and we will do a site visit. The way, this, the way the law works for subdivision control, if they can, if they can satisfy all the rules and regulations, they have the right to build there. We have not yet determined if they can satisfy those. And that's the first step that we're asking Mr. Murphy to present to us in August. And until we have that proof plan, nothing's going to move forward.
I understand.
Paul Raymond?
Yes, please go ahead, Paul.
Yes, just here, it says staff notes on, uh, the material received. We had asked for the applicant, uh, to provide a proof plan showing the layout uh, pursuant to the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of Land in Burlington for the next meeting. And I would prefer to wait for that. We ask that you, uh, reiterate this request to the applicant. So I think before we spend a lot of time on this, uh, it may be well diver, uh, 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 you know, brought forth to us that this, that this is not a buildable lot. So, you know, why, why go through the whole drill if in fact it may not be a buildable lot?
Exactly, Paul. You're exactly right. So.
So I would move that we, uh, that we move this to our next meeting.
I would agree.
If we want to do a site plan, if we want to do a visit in between, we can do that, but.
I think the first step is that we need that proof plan. But, um, before we move, I, I agree with you that we don't want to get into the details of this because we don't yet know if it's going to move forward. But, um, before I ask for a, can, a motion to continue, I just wanted to see if there were any other neighbors present that, that wanted to speak. They've been waiting a long time. I don't want to tell them I can't. Is there anyone?
Yes, yes, please. Uh, this is, uh, Bill and Amy Lozano. How are you this evening?
Hi, thanks for being here.
We live at Two Bird Street onto the property, and I just want to, uh, confirm if there is going to be a site visit, that we are all notified of if and when this site visit will be. I mean, I wholeheartedly agree with, uh, Attorney Giuliano and Mike Farrell, uh, regarding all the issues. And I have a couple of more issues with the project if it goes forward. Just confirming that we will be notified if there is a site visit.
Okay.
So the easiest, just to quickly interrupt, uh, the easiest way to make sure that you're on our list is to send your email contact to planning@berlinson.org and then we will create an email list to, for all of you. If we just have your address, we have to send it snail mail through a piece of paper, but if we have your email list, you can get a lot more information from us. So um, anyone on the call who's interested to be, um, on that notification list, please send your contact to planning@berlinson.org. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Lozano. Is there anyone else, any of the neighbors that want to weigh in quickly before we continue this to August? Okay. All right then. Um, I am looking for a motion.
This is Paul, a motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of August 20th, 2020.
This is Ernie, a second motion.
Chairman LaRue?
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond?
Yes.
Member Cavino?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Spaya?
Yes.
Member Rappaport?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Thanks. Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Bye bye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. All right. Um, moving on, we're on item 7G, a public hearing, application for approval of a definitive subdivision plan four and five Redmond Street. Murray Hills Incorporated is the applicant. And actually, before we, um, hear from the applicant and even before we hear from staff, I just wanted to bring up that this is another issue very much like the one that previous to this, um, where we are asking the applicant to provide a proof plan showing that the layout pursuant to the rules and regulations governing the subdivision Land in Burlington. We need that for the next meeting. And, um, we also want to ensure that the applicant knows that the waivers that they are seeking need to be in the public interest. So we're going to be looking for two things at our August meeting, both that proof plan and an explanation as to why the waivers are in the public interest. So again, we can have a brief explanation as to what this is about, but we're probably not going to get too far into the weeds because we don't yet know if this can even be built out. So, um, with that said, I'm going to ask Kristen to give us a quick overview before we hear briefly from the applicant.
Um, sure. So, yeah, I was going to bring up those two things just to, um, again, just like the last one, just to understand. Um, you know, our rules and regs and backing out of the, the waivers from the subdivision. This is also, this is the end of, um, Redmond Road. Back in 2004, we approved the property that you can see on the plan as Three Redmond. That was, um, a historic lot, 50 feet of frontage. So, and we built, uh, and there's quite a bit of wetland. There's 5,000 square feet on that lot, uh, 50 feet of frontage. This proposal, um, which, um, will be explained as to extending that roadway, but, um, there, it is in front of conservation. There is some questions with DEP about, um, wet, wetland replication, um, on site, around the site. There's some conversations about donations of property. So there's, I guess I just wanted to bring up that there's a couple of other question marks that we are still working on resolving with departments. And others prior to, um, August that is also kind of influx as we move. The, um, the Conservation Commission also was looking to see if there was a way that they could access from Raymond Road, which is the other direction. And I know, um, their wetland scientist was going to go and take a look at that as, as well. So anyway, I just was bringing up that there's a lot of moving parts that are still, um, that we're still talking through, but wanted to just bring this up, just like the last one is, you know, just looking at the general layout and starting the discussion.
Okay, thank you. Um, so who, who is here representing the applicant?
Uh, yeah, hi, this is David Romero, Commonwealth Engineering. We're, we're engineering the record. Yeah, so we, I do understand that we need a proof plan and we, we were prepared, we thought, we're, we're still looking at coming in, as Kristen said, coming in from Raymond Road. So we'll, we'll defer to when, when we get, figure that out exactly how we're going to access the site. I do want to clarify that no matter how we access it, there is going to be wetland impact either from Raymond Road or right off of Bedford Street. So the proposal right now is to extend, um, the pavement to improve the, the, the Redmond Street because it is an existing street, a 40-foot wide private way. And the lots are both existing lots. So again, we're not, uh, we're not subdividing, not creating lots or road. We're simply, uh, looking to improve Redmond Street and put in full drainage sewer water. And we are asking for waivers that, and that, we, we believe that that is for advantageous to the site. Um, and you do see that there are two lots proposed, uh, on lots, uh, number four and number five. And we are in front of the conservation, as Kristen said, but it is considered a limited project because this is, this is kind of a landlocked piece of upland that we hope to, the hope propose to, uh, to develop. Um, so that's a quick and brief, um, explanation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Romero. So, um, you understand though that you're going to come back with both the proof plan and with an explanation as to why these waivers would be in the public interest because we're going to need all of that.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're clear on that. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay. With that having been said, and that we're not going to get too much into the details, do board members have any questions they want to ask now before we continue? Mr. Raymond?
Uh, no, I say the, uh, with the previous application, uh, I think we're kind of wasting time until we get the proof plan.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Cavino, do you have anything?
So, sorry, was muted. Uh, other than, um, as in the previous, uh, plan, if we could show the, uh, location of the, uh, residences abutting this property, it would be helpful, especially if they can do a proof plan. Doesn't have to be approximate.
Mr. Gaffney?
No comment. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Spaya?
All set. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Is Rappaport?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, so I don't have any other questions except I, I would just want to state, we probably are going to want to have a site visit for this one as well later on down the road. Okay. Are there any people who are present who are members of the public that would like to speak on this matter before we continue it to August?
Hi, uh, yeah, this is, uh, sorry about that. Yeah, I'm, uh, Tony Gaglione, uh, live, uh, two, two Redmond Street. So, uh, just moved in in, uh, March. Uh, glad to be part of the Burlington community. Uh, so I appreciate this forum. Thank you. Uh, so, um, just in conversations, uh, and I believe one of my neighbors was on earlier, uh, but I guess if we speak about public interest, the public that lives on Redmond Street is, is not too enthusiastic about this. Imagine, uh, we bought this property, um, um, being next to wetlands and, uh, you know, looking at, uh, uh, the environmental impact and, um, just not enthusiastic about, uh, don't really agree that it's going to be an improvement, uh, to our property values or to the, uh, public interest or the people living on this road. Uh, the other three families on this road, um, feel the same way that I do about that. So just, uh, don't want to get too far into it. I know this has been a long meeting so far, but, um, I, I did have additional questions, you know, about this possibly being an HOA, how that works, uh, the storm drainage system. I know they're reevaluating that. Just wanted to, to be known also that, uh, the neighbor over here at Three Redmond, uh, at the end of the street currently, where you, uh, Kristen talked about, uh, that being allowed and already on existing wetlands. They constantly, uh, I've been here, you know, three months now, at least once a month, they've got, uh, major storm drainage, uh, system issues already currently at that house. I've seen trucks out there pumping, uh, the, the storm drainage out there, um, once, once a month as it is. So just want the developer to be aware of that and the board to consider that as well.
Okay.
So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other people online that would like to weigh in on this before we continue?
Yeah, hi, this is, uh, Ron and Rose Conti. Thank you for, uh, taking time because I know it's a long meeting. Uh, we just like to echo the, uh, opinions of, uh, Tony. Uh, we don't see where it is in our best interest to extend. Uh, we have kids, there's small children on the road, dead end. I know it'll continue to be a dead end, but we're going to increase the traffic uh, with two extra houses down the end of the street. And we, we're still, uh, not quite sure or convinced that the, uh, drainage will be addressed. And I know that's, uh, in front of conservation. But thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conti.
So I just want to echo, um, what we said with the last proposal, just anyone who's listening or in the, uh, here in the audience or watching TV, if you want to be on an email list to discuss this, just email planning@berlinson.org and we'll. We create a list for every project of interested folks. So email is always easy.
Okay, thank you.
Barbara, this is Brady. Can I just jump in real quick? Um, so just to kind of, just to reiterate what Kristen said in the comments on the WebEx. Jim Unsworth did ask if, um, all of Butters, including Raymond, would be notified of future meetings and, um, possible site visits. So I think Kristen just answered that question. So.
Okay. Thank you, Brady. All right. I think we're ready to continue this to the planning board meeting of August 20th, 2020.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to continue this, ma'am, this planning board meeting, August 20, 2020.
This is Ernie, a second that motion.
Chairman LaRue?
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond?
Yes.
Member Cavino?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Spaya?
Yes.
Member Rappaport?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, moving on, we have an item I, seven I, continued public hearing petition to rezone property to the general business district, 207 Cambridge Street, submitted to the planning board. Kristen, um, if you could.
No, wait, wait.
Oh, it's H, H.
At the bottom of page 23.
Oh, I missed one. Oh, my goodness. Scratch that.
Yeah, we're not done with subdivisions yet.
Okay, item 7H is a public hearing, application for approval of an amendment to a definitive subdivision plan, 108 Muller Road. Edward and Elena Yivitskaya are the app, I'm sorry, to have skipped over you. I did not mean to do that.
Madam Chair, my name is Brian Levy. I'm an attorney of Beverly and Southern. I represent Aunt, uh, and Ilana Yivitskaya and, um, your daughter, Renata Yivitskaya, and their son-in-law, Mark Petro. I'm getting some feedback on the line. With me on the phone tonight is the, uh, Project PLS Nelson. And also on the line is our. I'm still getting feedback. Someone sounds like they're on the phone or something.
Try, uh, try again. I think we're.
Okay.
Barbara?
Alan Nelson is on the line with me, our surveyor, and our technical examiner, Ed Raiden. And I can see my, uh, client, Mark and, Mark and Renata on the, on the line as well here tonight. This is an application to, um, modify, uh, a project you have already approved. Um, and only a minor modification is, is requested. In a nutshell, what we're looking to do tonight is to reposition, um, a 15-foot wide, uh, paved driveway from, uh, Lot A of the approved subdivision out to Cormier Road so that it is located entirely within a 20-foot wide easement, which is on, uh, 26 Cormier Road, rather than, uh, have that, uh, driveway on, uh, both that easement and the adjacent, adjacent 20-foot wide easement, which is on the adjacent property at 30 Cormier. So you have two, two back-to-back 20-foot rights of way from the, um, subdivision parcel A. And Brady, I don't know if you can point to that for us so people will know what we're talking about. It's where the, uh, the purple area is. Where the purple area is, and the-
There we go.
I don't know if you have a cursor there available that you can point to that with?
Very tiny hand cursor right there.
Sorry?
There's a very tiny hand cursor that is-
Oh, okay. Anyway, so the, that is the proposal, is to move the driveways as it was approved in the subdivision plan. It is on two 20-foot-wide easements, and to place it so that it is only within the one 20-foot-wide easement on 26 Cormier. We're also looking to put the water service in that same right-of-way. Everything else is unchanged from the subdivision plan that you approved last year. All the conditions, all the waivers, nothing else changes. The background briefly for why we're here is that we have three generations, actually, those family that are living right now at 108 Muller, the Yivitskys, Edvard and Elena, and also Mark and Renata and their young child. And they were seeking to take, Yivitskys to take their six-acre parcel and make it into two lots so that there could be a second house where their daughter and son-in-law could live with their new child in accordance with the local process. A variance was obtained because there was a frontage and lot width area deficiency. So a variance was obtained to make up for those deficiencies. And then in accordance with the local practice, the variance request was followed by the subdivision request, creating the two lots, taking the six-acre lot and breaking it up into roughly a two-acre lot and roughly a four-acre lot, which was approved by this board. And you can see, again in this plan, the two side-by-side 20-foot-wide rights-of-way. Approved plan is a little bit different than this one because the gray driveway cuts through both of the rights-of-way rather than just one of them. That decision that you made included a condition because the board had a concern with cut-through traffic, traffic cutting through from Cormier all the way over through to Muller. And your condition provided that access for the proposed house lot shall not be laid out in a manner that connects Muller Road and Cormier Road, enabling cut-through traffic. Boulders, landscaping, or other similar type of items shall be placed in this location to deter from this movement now and in the future. After the approval, the decision of the board was approved by the neighbors to Superior Court, and the main point of the appeal was questioning the easement. And while there was an acknowledgement in that lawsuit that there is a written easement deed and a easement plan with respect to the easement that is on 26 Cormier, there was more doubt cast on the other easement, which is on 30 Cormier Road. So since the subdivision rules and regulations do provide for making changes for approved plans, we've come back to you and the plan in front of you is the modification, shows the modification we're seeking to have that driveway within the 20-foot-wide right-of-way that is on 26 Cormier. We sort of bolstered our case here. I don't usually bring a title examiner and have a title memorandum submitted to a planning board. Because of the usual circumstances here, I thought that was a good idea. The title examiner is on the line and his memo has been submitted to you confirming, in his opinion, that in fact, there is good and record marketable title. There is a written easement deed and easement plan for this easement on 26. While the opinion of the examiner is that he believes that the entire 40-foot right-of-way is one that is for the benefit of my client, that has been challenged and is also lacking a written easement deed. So the thinking was, let's simply move the driveway into the easement, which is unquestioned. And that has a benefit, and that is that it is going to save the mature trees that are in this area. Those are shown on the plan. By moving the driveway, we will not need to cut down those trees or otherwise interfere with them. Also, to the board's concern that there might be cut-through traffic, it is, if you, Brady, can magnify this plan a little bit. You can see right in the corner of the lot, there's a notation for existing boulders and existing landscaping at the end of the 20-foot right-of-way, which would meet up with the area where the right-of-way comes off of Muller Road. So that area has been physically blocked with both boulders and landscaping. And you can also see from the plan the separation between the two, the two driveways, the two paved areas, the two gray areas, the easement coming off of Muller and the easement coming off of Cormier, do not touch one another. There's a gap in between them. And if someone isn't going to drive through the boulders and through the landscaping, they're going to have to drive over my client's front yard to cut through to Muller Road, and that's not happening. My client is going to take whatever steps he needs to in terms of grading and landscaping to make sure that doesn't happen. So I think that the question about the cut-through has been answered. We've provided what is necessary for that. We've also agreed, as you can see in this application, to limit the use of the driveway from the new Lot A to Cormier Road to one house, and that is for Lot A. Once they get a C of O, the Yivitskys would give up their right to use that right-of-way out to Cormier. So there would be only one family, only one family using that driveway for access purposes. So for those reasons, we would ask the board to grant the modification. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Levy. This is Barbara again. Kristen, did you want to provide any guidance on this one? It's been a long process.
It's been a long night. So for, this is a modification to a subdivision. In modifications to a subdivision, you are allowed to review the modification. You are not re-reviewing the whole subdivision again. So what you're looking at here is when you look at the driveway between 30 and 26, and actually, in the notes that I gave you, I said that it was moving toward 30, but it's moving toward 26. There's, back in 2006, I think, when the original property owner spun off both those lots, 26 and 30, he saved himself two 20-foot right-of-ways that you're looking at right here to access out to Cormier Road. As mentioned, there was some title questions on one side, but not the other. So with this, they're looking to completely move the driveway from center of the two easements fully to one side of the 20-foot, one side of the easement to put the driveway in. If you recall during the regular, the definitive subdivision plan, there's those two trees, and I think, I think people laughed, and I said, they're like two trees that you'd like get married under or something. But they were really cute trees that we were worried about with the driveway in the center. Actually, this is moving further away from them, so they're being, they definitely will be preserved. So really what you're looking at is a shift of the driveway toward 26 Cormier Road and on the easement on that side, as well as the associated utilities that came up the driveway. That's all I have. We also, we'll continue to the next meeting just because of the policy of, you know, the two meetings before we, the one, having two meetings before we close. So this will continue to August.
Okay, thank you, Kristen. All right, I'm just going to see what the board has to say about this one. Member Raymond, do you have any questions or comments you'd like to make?
No, it's just my headache is coming back, thinking about going through this drill. And I believe I voted against it. So I don't know, I'd really, I guess, take, pay attention to the recommendation of staff on this. But, you know, I don't know if it makes a lot of difference if they move the driveway. I would have to look at the implications of what that is as far as the traffic and so forth is concerned, because I think this created the bizarrest lot we have in Burlington. But at any rate, that's what my thinking is about it. And I'm glad we're going to continue it.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Member Covino?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Can I just ask Kristen to clarify something if I could?
Of course.
And that is, so the easement that the driveway will now be on is something that nobody has challenged legally. Is that correct?
According to what we understand from, from, yes, from the attorney, that there's, I guess, some confusion on one side of the easement, and there is none on the other side. And I think, as mentioned, the title, the title attorney is on the line to confirm that as well. We didn't get into a lot of that nuance. What we had for documentation was that, you know, we didn't dig, I guess, as deeply, but what we had was we had the easements on a plan as well as deed references to those easements. So, but what you're seeing here is it seems like there's definitely a clean easement where they're showing the driveway right now. Because that was one of the hiccups, I think, that came up in the appeal. That, again, we, the appeal, we're not directly involved in the appeal, but then, you know, obviously, it's our decision. But, if that answers your question.
Yes, it does. Thank you. Then based on that, unless I could be convinced otherwise, I'd be inclined to vote in your favor.
Mr. Covino, if I could just add to that, because I really, I don't want to steer you in the wrong direction. The complaint that was filed, filed by the neighbors, if you read it, it seems to concede that issue, but I can't speak for them. And I don't know if they have a lawyer that's going to be on the phone tonight. I don't know what they're going to say. But that's why I have my title examiner here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm all set right now, Madam Chair, since we're going to be continuing and then-
Thank you, Ernie. Member Gaffney?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So maybe what I can get next time is the plan that we approved versus what we're seeing now, so I can kind of do a comparison there. And what we approved before was the parcel that it looks like it's on the right of the existing house. Wasn't that going to be on the left of the existing house?
So originally, it was proposed on the left with access to Muller, and it was when the access for Cormier was under consideration because of the concern about cut-through from police and fire and others, the house flipped to the other side.
And then we, we were talking about fencing along that driveway as well?
I believe we considered that question, yes. I don't remember the outcome.
So then, is this something that we are approving or we're just looking at it? Maybe I can try to understand what we have to do here.
What's in front of you is the modification to the subdivision. The modification is the shift of the driveway, and so that therefore, that's what is under consideration by the board.
Okay. And if, do we, do we have an opportunity to deny it?
I believe so. I have to, you know, just make, look at the modification rules, but-
Yeah, and under what conditions? So if it's denied, then it goes back to the original plan, which there is, where the right-of-way is contested. Is that what I understand? Not even by the title attorney, probably is not even allowed, maybe.
Well, I mean, that was the issue at hand, that that's why they did the title search a little. But, you know, we, we're not confirming or not, we're not confirming there's any issue. It's just that was what was brought up during the appeal, and that's why I think that was one of the reasons why you're seeing the shift here.
Okay. And is the current decision currently under appeal?
Yes.
Okay.
And Mr. Gaffney, the approved plan is attached as Exhibit B, as in void, to the supporting memo, and that would show you the, how the driveway, if you sort of look at the two plans side by side, the subdivision plan modification, which is on the screen, and that Exhibit B to the memo, if you look at those side by side, you can see the shifting of the driveway.
Yeah, I understand that. So I guess we're on that, is if it's under appeal in, what, Wayne Court? Is that where the appeal is?
Superior Court.
Superior Court, thank you. So if this would be approved, would the people that are appealing our decision previously, would they drop the appeal?
I have no idea.
Okay, so we are deciding something that is currently under appeal, and if approved, would somebody, so we already have the existing plan is under appeal. If we approve a second one or modify one that's currently under appeal, is the one, the second one that's approved, is that basically still under appeal because it's just a modification of the existing one?
Right. So the counsel, counsel to the abutters will know what to do. I have no doubt about that. To maintain whoever writes, the abutters want to maintain, to challenge this as well. We feel that by moving it, there's really no basis for doing that, but I can't say what they're going to do.
So again, maybe I've got a little experience there and this type of thing with, what I would feel comfortable with is not even taking this until the appeal process is through. Unless, maybe there's someone going to talk to that, the appealing party agrees with this and says, once that's done, then the appeal is done. Because why are we going to go through something with a decision that's currently under, currently under appeal? I'm not comfortable with that at all.
Right. So what we're trying to do is to address an issue that has been raised. Think of this as any other issue that would be raised during a subdivision process itself, is to make a plan revision, address a comment by an abutter. That's, that's all this is. It's the same type of thing. The difference here is it's happened after the planning board has approved the plan. And so really, the only issue is the modification, is there some objection that you, that's out there to give a good reason to not to vote to modify it? Of course, you have the discretion to do what you, what you like. But as we see it, there's no engineering or any other type of issue which is going to arise from the shift of the driveway, and it also addresses an issue that has been put on the table.
Except for impacts to abutters. Right. So what I would do is I guess I'll wait to hear from the abutters and their attorney to see what their, what their thought is on that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Bill. Member Espino?
All set, Madam Chair. Thanks.
Member Rappaport?
I'm all set, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay. I also am very unsure about this, and I'm looking forward to hearing from the abutters and their legal counsel. So I think it makes sense now to hear from them if they are present.
Yeah, Barbara, this is Brady. We have Neil and Susan Russell, abutters to the proposed amendment. So Neil and Susan, if you would like to jump on, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Suzanne Russell. My husband, Neil, and I own the property at 26 Cormier Road in Burlington, which we purchased in 2011. And we are the abutters at topic to 108 Muller, and we have several concerns.
Just to sort of give a general overview, thank you for the time. Again, we, one of the principal components of our law- Again, we, one of the principal components of our lawsuit was, in fact, we got no proper notice, which the board may remember, we've attempted to rectify multiple times, and this hearing is essentially a chance for you to hear from the abutters, if you've never heard up to this point. So there was that component. I'd also like to change the order of my bullet points slightly for a minute to address the point about the existing boulders. We are the people who placed those boulders when we built here, that structure is entirely on our property, we could choose to remove those boulders at any time, and I would also point out that there's multiple properties with rights to the right-of-way, and that no structure has been authorized to be placed on any part of this right-of-way going forward, and it won't be approved by any of us that are, in fact, it takes one of us to deny it, as I understand it. So with those, with those two points, quoting something I heard recently, this plan should be denied because it's not in the interests of the neighborhood or Burlington. It was never properly vetted in terms of the frontage, and various notices were never sent out, we will still be prepared to contest on that basis going forward. The proposed lot has no frontage on Cormier, it has frontage on Muller Road, we have never granted any permissions for any structure such as nailboxes, trashcans, yardways to be placed on our property or on the right-of-way, we don't see how this could be a buildable lot with that frontage granted. Again, no notices for variance of any type has ever been sent to any of the abutters for this, and we feel this may still be grounds for a further appeal or a modification of the current appeal, assuming that this tries to move forward. As has been pointed out, we've contested that there is any so-called 40-foot right-of-way, this place is a landlocked lot in violation of two subdivision rules, at least two subdivision rules requiring a 40-foot access to a landlocked lot. I can give you those numbers of the rules, but there's at least two that are in violation. Additionally, as far as we know, no one in the Wilburn side got notice of this meeting, another violation of procedure, we could contest that. Again, multiple properties, as many as seven or eight properties, have rights to pass from Cormier to Muller, and this plan does absolutely nothing to address those rights. Any of those properties at any time could request this right-of-way to be opened up and connect Cormier to Muller, and constructing this driveway basically just greatly increases the chances that someone is going to find it attractive to request the use of that right-of-way if this driveway is granted. So I sent a note to the board earlier today, all the abutters on the Cormier side and Kelly Farm side of this property are against this plan, we have been since the beginning, we've never had a chance to be heard. Several people have managed to hang on till 10 o'clock tonight, 10:30, in order to comment. We lost a couple of people off the call who couldn't be here. Another comment I'd like to make is that we've recently learned that the properties just north of us, at 24 and 22 Cormier, have had significant drainage issues with an underground reservoir or stream, and they are extremely worried that any construction in this area, it may cause those problems to be revisited, and this is several hundred feet north of us, and, but there is apparently some sort of underground flow through this area. They both have had extensive drainage systems added to their houses since they were built to deal with that, and that any construction in this area is liable to exacerbate those issues. So the, along with, along with those things, the proposed subdivision is going to retain rights to pass through to both sides of the road. The fact that 108 Muller is granting passage to Cormier is a minor point on the lawsuit, it does nothing to resolve any of the concerns about connecting the two properties together. Basically, no one is giving up any rights that are meaningful by that statement. So the new property is going to fully retain all the rights to pass through from Muller to Cormier, as stated, you know, in the current proposal. I'll point out another minor detail, again, the sewer on this plan is incorrect, the sewer line as proposed is incorrect, it's been incorrect for years, there's an engineering change with the engineering department that shows the correct layout of the sewer, but this site plan is still incorrect as to the location of the sewer. The, let's add, I addressed the issue with the boulders, the proposed driveway that's going to be built could easily be connected across the two adjoining properties without using the right-of-way. I would just like to point out that these are two families that are going to live adjacent to each other, I find it extremely difficult to believe that they're not going to want to drive out to the Muller side in order to do their grocery shopping or to otherwise access the property to the Muller side, and they could very easily connect whatever driveways they build across their own property without accessing the right-of-way going forward. So I know that there's some neighbors that have been hanging on for a while, and I'd like to just sort of stop with my points and give the other folks a chance to talk. I think Raoul Verada is at 30 Cormier, he's the other principal that's been involved in the lawsuit, I'd like to make sure he gets a chance to talk.
Thank you, Planning Board, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Sorry, we, we're all the family, my wife and I bought this house at 30 Cormier Road, Burlington, five years ago, and we really appreciate the opportunity to be heard here at this meeting. We have many, many concerns that merit the attention of the Planning Board at this time. I've circulated this draft of these concerns to the Planning Board, and I am just going to go briefly here to, just to highlight. So the biggest one is our property and Neil's property at 26 Cormier are the ones that will take the brunt, and not only other people in the neighborhood, because of the increased movement of the vehicles in our backyard, reducing our privacy completely. The Planning Board is requesting to closely evaluate the effects of the proposed driveway, not only on our property, but also on the trees and the wildlife in the nearby pond area, and the long-term consequences to the neighborhood as well. The driveway will be altering the dynamics of rainwater percolation, just as Neil mentioned a minute ago, next to our house, on our side of the yard, in the backyard, the driveway runoff water is likely to cause flooding to our patio and cause permanent damage to our home basement. Proving snow on the proposed driveway in the winter and dropping the clear snow on our side of the land will take away the remaining space for our snow clearance, which will be creating a big issue for us. The new driveway will be running within inches of mature trees, 30-plus, 35-plus old trees, which will, which, whose root system will be seriously affected because of the laying down the driveway and the vehicular traffic on this, affecting the health of these trees. The driveway will also be affecting the second largest tree within the backyard, so both trees' conservation will be affected. Driving in wintry conditions within inches of these big trees poses risk not only to the vehicles, but to the passengers, unless additional safety measures are taken. With no current vehicular activity right now, no headlights, no sounds, no vibrations in our backyard, within 100 feet of the pond water, the vegetation around it, our backyard offers great refuge to a lot of wildlife species, rabbits, beavers, turtles, cranes, wild geese, and several rare birds that visit the pond area regularly. The cumulative effects of the driveway and the salts and the minerals that during each winter that will be sprinkled on it to keep the driveway open will destroy the composition of the water itself, and that is going to drain into the pond eventually. The runoff will be filled with chemicals and minerals that don't exist right now. It's going to change the quality of water as well. The Planning Board should, is requested to consider these above consequences before permitting this driveway, since the path is probably is going to increase some unwanted pedestrian traffic, which nobody can stop, and again, affecting our privacy, security, and tranquility that we enjoy right now. Again, this one will greatly decrease our value, not only just the wildlife consequences, traffic consequences, and water percolation consequences to our neighborhood, both our houses, Neil's property at 26 Cormier and our property at 30 Cormier will greatly be affected in their home values, and the beauty of our backyard will be completely destroyed for a slight driving convenience of the Muller Road subdivision. The monetary loss for both of us will be, I can't even say how much it will be. So these are high-value properties. So where our property at 26 are the ones directly affected, the whole neighborhood is behind us, supporting not to allow for this driveway to be built. So again, we want to state that, through the last five years that we've been here, we enjoyed the beauty of our backyard, abutting the pond, we cherish the area, we maintain it so well, we take care of this wildlife so well, all this will be going down the drain if this goes through. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir, for coming and for sharing your concern to this.
This is Neil again. Raoul reminded me of something I failed to mention earlier, and before I yield to the other neighbors, this new driveway position is going to cut into the existing slope of the hill that's here, it is going to change the drainage of the hill significantly from the earlier plan that was quote-unquote "approved." It may not be obvious from the drawing, but there's at least a two-to-three-foot area of a current sloped land that's going to have to be cut into to create this driveway.
Okay, thank you, Neil. Are there other neighbors that would like to speak on this matter, or other members of the public, anyone?
Barbara, do you have an abutter? This is Brady, I do have an abutter listed as 28 Stonewall Drive, Wilburn.
Okay.
And I believe they are on the phone, but they're also connected with their iPad, and they weren't quite sure if we would be able to hear them, so if they can hear me, go ahead and speak, I'm not sure what the verdict is with that.
Well, let's, let's give them a minute. All right, well, at some point they raise a hand, we will let them jump in.
They could also write a question, and Brady could read it, if that was easier for them.
Absolutely, and Barbara, Dave just raised his hand.
Who did?
Dave, he would like to speak.
Hi.
Hello, Dave.
Hi, Dave Webb, I'm a town meeting member in Precinct 7, and I'm one of maybe at least three town meeting members in this area who have been following this project for quite a while, and we support Neil and Rayo in their objections to this site, and my primary worry, again, the concern, is the potential of this cut-through from Cormier all the way over to Muller Road, which would, if it was at all a reasonable pathway for cars, would create a huge issue in traffic, could create a huge issue in traffic coming from either direction. Market Basket and the Middlesex Mall are just off of where this would come out on Muller Road, and that is a worry. There's also the issue, as I remember from the original plan, on the Muller roadside, there is only a 15-foot driveway, or maybe 11-foot driveway there, and I think the Police and Fire Department would not approve letting their vehicles pass up there, so that's an issue as to what the Police and Fire Department have to say about this whole project. But anyway, I would, as a town meeting member, like to support Neil and the abutters in their objection to this whole plan. I think it's just a terrible idea, and I don't see how it would, how they would even build on that, on that lot, which, which has, to its southern end, has lots of trees and woods, and is right, goes right down to the pond that's there. So that, that could be a buildable issue, but I guess that's a separate issue from what we're talking about today, so thank you.
Thank you, Dave. All right, do we hear from anyone else that wants to speak? Okay.
Can you, is it possible, do you guys hear me?
Who's that?
Hi, this is Mike Rosetti at 28 Stonewall Drive in Wilburn.
Hi.
We can hear you.
Thanks for calling in, Mike. Go ahead.
Hey, I just wanted to just kind of reiterate what's going on as far as how we've gotten to this point, as far as the abutters and never being contacted. I've lived in 28 Stonewall Drive, which is the first house in Wilburn, right on the Burlington line, right next to 30 Cormier, and I've never been notified of anything that's gone on in Burlington over the years, when the lots were split, and here it is again, I got informed of what's going on here by, you know, the Russells, and I, you know, it's, it's really surprising to me that there used to be one, one house existing at 26 Cormier, and now all of a sudden, you know, there's one on 30, now they're trying to drop one about 50 or 100 feet from a pond, and I just, you know, I just got to reiterate with this, that I think that you get to revisit the whole thing at this point of how it's gotten to this point, we're talking about driveways, when I'm just really surprised that you're able, able to get to the place that a property can actually be built where you guys are planning on doing this. So I just fully support that, you know, a little more communication to the abutters, and I think it's very important. I am really concerned, because I'm actually below everybody as far as the drainage, and I'm just worried about what's going to happen when this all kind of, if this all gets moved forward, so that's all I'd share, and I support what's going on in the suit and everything. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for calling in. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Madam Chair, if I could have a moment to respond?
Briefly, yes.
Yes, so with respect to notice, we provided the notice based on the certified abutters list that was given to us, so I don't know why 28 Stonewall in Wilburn didn't receive notice, if it's not on the abutters list that the town gives us, then we don't give the notice, but we followed what we're supposed to do.
Can I, can I just ask you this? Was anybody in Wilburn on the list?
I, I don't have the list in front of me, so I know we...
Well, so I'm going to, I'm going to tell you that nobody from Wilburn was notified, okay? And when, when the variance was first granted for 30 Cormier with less frontage, I was never notified as an abutter, and I went to the town and approached them, and basically was told there's nothing I could do.
Well, we're glad we're talking tonight, and you'll have another opportunity in two weeks again. With respect to drainage issues, I can let Alan Nelson address that, but I don't believe there are any drainage issues. The drainage here is through the porous pavement system, and by sliding the driveway over, you're not changing that. And the engineering department, I'm sorry, the Board of Health has already weighed back in with its comments, saying it has no concerns regarding the project. With respect to the issues raised by Mr. Verada, those sound like the types of issues are all going to be taken up at the Conservation Commission, and really, the main issue here, I think, was posed by Mr. Russell, where he's taking the position that there are numerous parties that have rights in the right-of-way, and if they wanted to, they could allow people to cut through from one easement to the other. So essentially, their argument is, well, even though we can stop cutting traffic, we might decide we don't want to do that, and because we might decide we don't want to do that, there can be country traffic, so... Sir, could I address that specific comment I interrupted you, but that's not exactly what I said. What I said is that any one of those property owners could request to use the right-of-way going forward. So, so the point is...
Let me jump in for just a minute, Mr. Levy. I feel like we're just getting a little bit out of hand here. Comments should be addressed to the board, not to each other, and we will do our best to hear everyone and give everyone a chance to speak, but this is not an opportunity for the differing parties to address one another, and that could get a little sticky, so let's not do that. Okay, we've heard from the neighbors who are present and from the applicant. I know I have a lot of questions about this, and I need to, to address some of them to our town council, and some of them to our planning staff. Kristen, I'm not quite sure where to go from here, can you advise me?
Well, I think, I mean, I think there's been some good questions brought up and some concerns, obviously. I think we need to, you know, just to speak with council a little bit and talk through just where the planning board is, to Bill's question of, you know, can, between the scope of what this is and our options for, for a vote, as well as, you know, look back at litigation, look back at notification, but also what are our... as well as, you know, look back at litigation, look back at notification, but also what are our options during litigation and what does it mean with the last project pending in Superior Court and this one? And just understanding that's kind of the process. We are continuing into, to August, so we can work through some of these questions, but you know, I think there's a lot of, a lot of good questions that have been brought up. And that I think we just, it's a unique, we're in a unique situation. We don't usually have projects in front of us. When we have pending litigation in front of us, we're on this Burlington, Woburn, Woburn, Lexington, kind of this whole area. We've had these kind of concerns and issues as we go through in terms of multiple butters in different towns and those requests. And anyway, I just want to go back and take a look at one of the notifications. I know there wasn't notification when the access switched with the planning board from Muller to Cormier. There should have been notification from the original application at Muller. But again, I'll have to go back and look, look at that and figure out where we were there. But I appreciate the folks from Woburn calling in and talking through this. I mean, this whole night has been a lot of neighbors coming, coming out in large groups and it's nice to hear from people and hopefully we can, you know, work through this. So. I don't have an answer. I just have a lot of questions as well. And I think we just need to work through it.
Thank you, Kristen.
You know, Attorney Levy and the attorney with the Russells. I think we, offline, I think we might need to just have a couple more discussions before August.
Thank you, Kristen. I'm inclined to continue this to August at this point, but I want to just check and see if my fellow board members have anything else they want to add before we do that. I think we have quite a bit of research and work to do before August on this one.
Nothing else, Madam Chair, that's Bill.
Thank you. Anyone else want to chime in?
No, I think we've got quite a bit to mull over. Thank you.
Yes, we do. We do. Okay.
And I will remind everybody that the, there was discussion about the previous subdivision and how, what that layout looked like. All of those plans are on the, on the planning board website if you want to take a look.
Okay. All right. And I am hoping for a motion.
Madam Chair, since Mike, I'd like to make a motion to continue these matters to the planning board meeting of August 20, 2020.
Second.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Espia.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate everyone coming and calling in and, and sharing their concerns with us. We will, I'm sure we'll see you all again in August.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion at this. We don't have to interrupt the, again, to continue this meeting. It's after 11 o'clock since it's eight minutes or seven minutes out now.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Espia.
No.
Member Rappaport.
No.
Okay.
Four, two.
Okay. We're moving on.
Guess you guys have to stay.
Item seven I is a continued public hearing petition to rezone property to the General Business District, 207 Cambridge Street, submitted by the planning board. Kristen.
I'm going to talk fast, but also continue. Because this was, came up as a question. Member Pembo was one of the early ones to bring this up. He's not at the meeting, so I don't want to move forward on that. But this is simply to rezone where the Burlington Auto Parts Store, the front of that building is Zoned BG, the back of the building is Zoned IG, to kind of be in better conformance with the town center and neighborhood without industrial uses. So that's what this is. I recommend continuance.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of August, whatever.
20.
Yeah, that's all.
I'll second that, Madam Chair, since Mike.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Espia.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have item J, a continued public hearing petition to amend the zoning bylaw, Article Nine, administration procedures that it pertains to permitting procedures submitted by the planning board. Now, these are the ones, we have a bunch of these, right?
So the first one is an actual change to the zoning bylaw in Article Nine that just says to do permitting as it says in all the rules and regs. And then in all the rules and regs, it says to allow for electronic permitting. I could print you out 100 pieces of paper or send you all of them, but I didn't. We actually, it's as simple as that. We've been, it's simple, so we've kind of been just continuing it, but we kind of got to the point where we're doing it already. We're guiding everybody to viewpoint. Let, I mean, it just literally says to allow for electronic permitting. So we propose that you vote. Unless you have an issue or disagree.
No, I think we'd like to do that. Can we vote on K through Q together?
Yes, but you have to vote on the zoning change separately and all the rules and regs together.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions before we go to vote? Great. I am looking for a motion.
Madam Chair, Bill here, a motion to vote favorably on the petition to amend the zoning bylaw, Article Nine, administration procedures as it pertains to electronic permitting procedures.
So what you meant was to close the public hearing and vote favorably, right?
That's what I meant to say. Close the public hearing and then I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Espia.
Yes, the both.
Member Rappaport.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Let me make the motion now again to vote favorably to petition to amend the zoning bylaw, Article Nine, administration procedures as pertains to electronic permitting procedures.
Second, Mike.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Espia.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take item seven K, seven L, seven M, seven N, seven O, seven P, and seven Q together for discussion.
Seconded by Mike.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond. Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Espia.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to attempt to consolidate this. Items K through Q are continued public hearings, petitions to amend the planning board procedural rules and regulations as they permit to permitting procedures for governing the subdivision of land in Burlington, or special permit rules, or site plan rules and regulations, or planned development rules and regulations, or planning board town center design rules, or small wireless facility design rules. And that's all of them. Am I allowed to consolidate like that?
Mm-hmm.
Sure.
Okay, good.
They're all your, your rules and regs, though. They well advertised. They, so again, and I, there was a question. I'll send out all of the documents in, in an email, kind of grouped together with the electronic permitting process in them. But as I mentioned, it's, it's just really taking all of these and you know, we have, you know, the process of to submit 12 paper copies and an application and a fee and all that stuff. And it's, it just takes that and turns it into kind of more of the process that we have now with viewpoint and electronic permitting and, and electronic fee submission.
Sounds good.
Motion, you want to motion to close the public hearing?
I do.
I did it. Yes.
Second.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes, yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Espia.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to vote favorably on items K through P listed above to amend the rules and regulations to include electronic permitting.
Seconded by Mike.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond. Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Espia.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
All right. Moving on, we do not have any minutes. We do have a couple of discussion items that I think we can discuss with quickly. The first one is 36 Mill Street definitive subdivision. And we are looking, they're looking for an extension of deadline.
Yep, that's it. 36 Mill Street was approved a long time ago. You've done this a lot of times. They're still working on it. Just a deadline from May 20th to May 20, 21.
Is this the one, Kristen, is this one right by the power lines there?
Right by the power lines at the corner, yeah. I mean, I remember when I was in the Board of Appeals on this one. So this goes back way, way back. So what is going on with that, that we have to approve it again? I'm just, I'm just.
You know, I mean, if you have, if you have questions and you want me to get more of an update, we'll just continue it to the next meeting. I'll put it on again.
Okay.
If you want an update, if you all say aye.
That'd be, that'd be good, because I hate to prove stuff that I don't have any information for and rubber stamp them.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Make a motion to continue this to the planning board meeting of August 20, 2020.
I don't think we need to vote on it, do we? Because it's just a discussion item.
No, you don't. You can, I'll just put it back on. But thank you.
Okay.
Very proud.
I also wanted to just very quickly update the rest of the board on what's going on with the sculpture part. Things are moving along very nicely. The Board of Selectmen very kindly agreed to let us proceed, even though we can't have any public event, but we're going to start installations anyway. We're going to have some online public events for people to participate in. And the sculptures are going to be installed, so people can just enjoy them. And I'm hoping it'll be something really nice for families and residents of Burlington to enjoy, especially during this COVID crisis. We thought it would be great to have another destination in Burlington where people can enjoy artwork. So the ground has started being prepared by the Burlington DPW and Rec Department. They've been working on this. And I understand they're going to be pouring some concrete slabs this coming Monday. It'll be out there in the field between the police station and Grand Hugh Farm and also one across the street on the Common. And we probably will be installing two a month, starting August, September, October. And that's the plan. It's coming along nicely and we're very excited about it. We have a beautiful new logo that we'll be unveiling soon that was designed by high school art students. And I think that's it. So if anyone has any questions, let me know.
I would just say no Confederate generals, please.
There will be no Confederate generals. Not those kinds of sculptures. So, does anybody else have any other business they need to discuss?
Really quick, just what happened with the mall at the park spots.
Thank you. Yes, thanks for reminding me. I think we had a really good meeting at the mall. There was a plan that was put forward when the mall was shut down and restaurants were just doing pickup. And they had some pretty large fields of parking spaces that were set aside for pickup, which made sense at the time because there was nobody at the mall. But now that the mall has opened, some of that seemed a bit excessive. So we had a great meeting at the mall. What we did is, well, two things. First of all, we looked at an interim plan. And as it turns out, the the area outside Pepe's, that was the biggest problem. They had 24 spaces. They've already cut down to 16. And what we agreed to do with Pepe's, because they felt very strongly that they needed those 16 spaces, but they really only need them for brief periods of time when they're doing their heaviest business on Friday and Saturday nights. So we decided to, as an interim measure, give them flex space. So for the, for most of the week, they're going to have the eight spaces that they had before. And then they will have the flexibility to go up to 16 for those brief periods of time on Fridays and Saturdays when they have a lot of pickup. We're going to do, we're offering the same thing to Cheesecake Factory, which currently has 15 spaces. Then in addition, we took a look around the parking lot to look at a future, the future for these types of spaces with the goal of having more generic spaces, 15-minute parking spaces for people who are coming in for pickups of any kind. And Justin Fieldhouse laid out a plan for us of what he intends to do. And they would be mostly generic spaces, except for some that are already contracted in that were pre-approved. And what they also are doing on the side near the food court is they have some numbered pickup spaces, which are not business-specific, but you know, if you go and you order a purse from Kate Spade and you order it online and you want to pick it up, you pull into a spot, you call them, you say, I'm in spot number three, and they bring it out. And it's possible we may have requests from the mall in the future to have more of those spaces. We're trying to be as flexible as we can, because right now the mall, according to Justin, is about 80% open, but they have only about 50% of the traffic coming through. And we, we want to be as accommodating as possible to help them get back up and running. So Macy's has some spots that are for pickups and some of the other stores that I, restaurants that I mentioned. As long as they're not interfering with regular mall business, we, we don't want to interfere with them. And that's the interim approach we're taking. And long-term, we have a map that we can distribute out to everybody where there will be generic short-term parking spaces. And this was something that we had discussed in January as well.
Okay.
Do you have a question?
Nope.
Okay. So I just wanted to say, we, we've just had some initial conversations with, with Simon. And next week we'll have a more robust kind of update to what's happening at the mall, just in general and construction and the different phasing. So just look for that from us next week.
One thing I would like to mention, though, the new sidewalk looks fantastic. I'm so happy we got that.
And speaking of sidewalks, the sidewalk on Chestnut Ave is, is moving forward too in that new little commercial building across, behind the castle.
Oh, great.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I, can I give a shout out to our fantastic assistant planner, Brady, who got finally like the, the right of access in order for us to build that sidewalk? So.
Oh, really?
Thank you, Brady.
Took, we had to get three right of access easements and just temporary easements, but there was one outstanding and he did a fantastic job.
This is Bill on the, the topic of sidewalks. I was walking down by, or riding my bike down by the business machines. Did we say we were going to put a sidewalk in there or no? Remember?
Yeah, there's the sidewalk of, oh, excuse me. Oh. A sidewalk that's some, something like outside of the conservation area. I'll have to look at it, but we did talk about, it wasn't along the roadway, I think. I think it was into the site a little bit.
But the, the whole building is complete, but just the sidewalk's not in there yet.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't gone through a walkthrough. We haven't been requested for a CEO quite yet, so.
I understand Joe has received some complaints about that as well, that it hasn't been started, even though the building's done.
The building's, the building's done and I think they're in it, at least from what I saw.
Yeah, we'll take, we'll take a look at that. And one last thing, since it's only, he only has, what's it, 11:08, 52 more minutes of Brady. Brady's birthday is today, so.
Happy birthday, Brady, tonight.
Thank you, everyone. To spend it on a public meeting.
What a wonderful way to spend your birthday.
Oh, yeah, right? Best day ever.
It's what I wish.
All right.
How's our other planner doing, Kristen? How's Liz doing? Okay?
She's, I talked to her this week. She's doing great. She's, you know, that kind of bored, wanted to know what we're doing. So I actually talked to her for quite some time this week. But she's, she's good. She, she's kind of come back in some form in September.
Thanks, everybody.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Espia.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Excuse me, yes.
Woo-hoo! Made it.
Good night, everybody. Thank you. Thank you, Brady.
Thank you, Brady.
Happy birthday, Brady.